But it's not the lows for up here. Up here?
Yeah.
There's fifteen, fifteen.
Eleven, eleven.
Eleven fifteen. Eleven sixteen, eleven seventeen. This is high. This is eleven fifty nine.
Oh, yeah.
We get the lows. What I'm suggesting, though.
Yeah.
The great need is here. Manhole here. And figure some gravity. What are some of them?
I don't know what you're basing.
Yes, I made it.
I have Joe in there, so bring him up here. Yeah, I wouldn't expect you. Said you didn't want to come, I said.
It was, I had somebody covering my normal day.
That would be making us feel important.
You are important.
It's good.
Yeah. Good.
Well, it's the, it's the elevation.
Yeah.
Just being the lower elevation, we can get as low as we can up there. Maybe, me and engineers have to do it, but. Move your stuff, they just can't get somebody in there to help with that.
So, was it, did they say they were going to take this up this, where you're covering this up there? On the sand there? The water line again?
Water line, it's right here, they're running the water here.
What else?
No jet there.
I guess you're not getting.
What would the, which the, uh? So you go to line inlet fourteen. See what the, oh, inlet of the, of the hill. See if there's an inlet fourteen.
I think these go through and by that.
Yep. By mail.
I know what you mean, three hours. We're like a superstar.
We, oh, yeah.
You know, if they don't have any action. I wish to tell them to put a house on there. Who's the plan?
Yeah.
You're on fourteen.
Oh, you have rusty.
Yeah, we have. Nine, nine, ten. Buddy, it was a, it was a creepy creep. He has rusty water. Eighteen. Right. With them, we won't. Question. We're having a hard time reading. Get a, uh, big ring square. Line of the low draft. I'm saying here, we saw the, like, cranberry. Yeah. We've been looking at it. My latest thought is, that is, there's a manhole there, there's a manhole for it. The stream that goes from the horn. That seems to be the burries, but. I'm saying, that's where we probably should run a lateral. With mowers, that's kind of like a call for it. They were going to give us this here. They were going to do this one right there.
Doesn't want to go this way though?
No. I was thinking. What I'm thinking is. You should be able to get gravity flow from their first floor. Let them.
So I was surprised today.
That's what we need, somebody to look at, tower. How you doing? Over here, doing it. There you go. That's what we need, somebody to look at, say, here's the best way out. Just baseboard news. About to do a lot of work, baseboard news. Small, it's hard to hunt or like that.
Yeah, I think ultimately, you want everybody to drive out, so you can, or with two, four. One's going to go one million.
I did catch that on the. Very.
Was to. The grading plan, well, that's already, he says grading plan.
This one isn't built?
Yeah.
This, this was built. The contours for low draft, because it has to get gravity flow for. It'll be. Zero, one, thirty. And thirty. This whole draw, no, these are. Ten, fifty, ten sixty, which is.
So this guy probably, this one. Six, thirty down.
Oh, we're ready to go. Is everybody here? You missed somebody.
Chris will be here tonight.
Chris will be here, I'm going to keep bending it.
All right. You're stuck with us.
Okay. We're here to, uh, discuss the plan for Menno Crest. Little bit of information. I had a meeting with the. Weaver Homes, along with. Gary was there, and Ed was there. And myself. And, uh, we went through the list of, uh. Comments from L S S on whether. Weaver Homes met the criteria on each item. Went through, how many there are. One through thirty-five. And then, uh, it goes into subdivision after that. That goes through, one through. Eight. Then it goes to storm water management. One through. One through thirteen. Fourteen, one through fourteen. Then it goes to traffic. One through. Six. And then, I made a list of things I was concerned with separately. And what we want to do is go through each one of these tonight. One to inform you all of things that, uh, Weaver Homes has agreed to. And still open items that they haven't agreed to. So, that's the intent of the meeting, is to get your comments, uh, on the table. So that gives you another week, actually two weeks before our regular meeting on the twenty-first. Where you can vote that you actually agree to these issues. So, it's going to be a lot of discussion, and I've been trying to organize this for simple groups of discussion. And I just haven't been able to do it. I think we have to just go number one, two, three, et cetera. And get your honest opinion of what you feel we shouldn't do it, what we want to agree to. I see Weaver Homes is here tonight.
Uh, it's Brett Schultz, uh, Menno Crest's O P with me tonight is attorney Matthew Fraser of. Law Office of Sebring and Associates. And to reintroduce Alberto, our team of the Gateway Engineers Project Lead on the engineering side of the project.
Do you have any update that you want to present before we start on this?
I, I don't believe so at this time, I'm assuming, I, it may be wrong to assume, it's, we summed up specifically the grading change we had talked about, like. With respect to slopes, um, which was applied to staff. I also have paper copies here, we're considering that.
This one here?
That's sent to us. I assume we'll get to that later.
We will get to it, uh, do you want to explain?
Sure.
What is, what, how it worked out, and your.
Yep.
Drawings that you gave us?
Does everyone?
You don't have one? Give everyone?
I know I made a.
I'm sure. Ron and, uh.
We've got three left, but I'd like to.
You okay, man? Okay, you want to just give us a quick rundown of what this ends up showing?
Absolutely.
I read it, and I, I have my opinion.
First sheet, this is, uh, two sheets, um, is exactly what is on the plan's estimate. The grading to the rear, and pardon my, to the rear or the south of lots four oh two, four oh three, four oh four, four oh five. Four oh seven, four oh eight, and four oh nine, is generally speaking. Has shown to currently meet your ordinance slope requirements of a maximum three to one slope, which is to be three foot of horizontal. Run to one foot of vertical, I'm sorry, yeah, one foot of vertical run, okay? Resultantly, and having already modified, uh, at least four of those lots to accommodate, five of those lots to accommodate a different product. Which would, again, comply with the ordinance, we are still basically pushing the limits of grading within, generally speaking, five to ten feet of the slope. Uh, up to, at the property line with, of the mason properly immediately to the south. Okay?
That you're on that, did you make a list of the tree in that area?
Uh, is that a hundred percent?
We are a hundred percent done.
Yeah, we are one hundred percent done locating, not only trees in this area, but as your ordinance.
You don't have it tonight?
I don't have it tonight, not enough. We will have it for our submission, for our submission. So this is, again, what is currently proposed on the as submitted drawings. If you'll turn the page. With no change to horizontal or vertical road alignment or lot lines. The slope, as you can see to the rear, and I'll just use those same lots, actually, I'll clarify, four oh one. Correct, we're traveling that way, as well as four oh seven, four oh eight, four oh nine. That slope has increased to a, a slope of two to one, which is two foot horizontally to one foot vertical. Resultantly, we are able to offset or buffer the, I'll just say, the mason property. As is dimensioned on these plans. To the east would be the retainage or non disturbance of approximately sixty-seven feet of. The ground surface and any trees that may be there. And to the more westerly slope, kind of lot number four oh eight. Again, approximately seventy-eight feet of retainage of existing condition, be that forest, field, whatever it may be, and any tree that may be located there. When we get through our submission, we, we certainly can take, um, and identify the number and type of, sort of desired of trees that are retained between these two grade options. But I think that keeping seventy feet of trees horizontally. For what I would, I honestly think would be a relatively minor, especially because it's a, it's a cut slope, this is an engineered fill, you're going to build a house. On top of, on top of forty feet of fill. That's clearly would be something that should be considered.
Well, it looks to me. Pretty small, that, looks to me that you're. Looking at not disturbing. A little more than half of the hillside.
Don't be ridiculous. Think that that's the first table, absolutely, yep.
And it looks also like you get a pretty good backyard. With time.
That's also correct.
So, doubly good.
Doubly good. And as I had mentioned, we did, to your point, Mr. Horn, we did increase marginally our back, the backyards we're creating, because that two to one gets steeped. So we, but also we put the lion's share, or the larger portion of the retainage here on the property line versus here in the, in the, in the yard. That, that was, let's say, fair is fair. We got a little bit, I think the plan in general gives a lot, certainly joining property owners, I would think would be. Far more satisfying.
So this is, this is a new submit. For us to decide if it's justifiable to go against our code, which is a three-one slope. To a two-one slope. To the advantage of not disturbing the hillside segment also. And when do you think you'll have the tree?
Um, when, we would certainly have, with our submission, heading into, prior to the next meeting, if you wanted some sort of, an advance supplement, is that reasonable to?
Yeah.
Correct, just, just putting together.
They finished yesterday, Brett.
Okay.
When you say we do submit it, you mean the next, our next meeting?
Prior to your next meeting, right. I will take the comment letter, I believe it's, uh, January fifteenth. Or, I'm sorry, February fifteenth, the last L S S E letter, combine with whatever your decision may be here, and any other comments that may arise, or decisions from this meeting, package those up and get them in. And, don't let me speak, you know, timeframe, um.
I was hoping for Friday.
Correct. We, with respect to the base of the other engineering comments, the ones that are identifiable and, and correctable, they're, they're done, for the most part.
We want any. Additional information that you are ready to supply, this would be new, than anything else you have prior to our next meeting.
Well, Alberto, just mentioned, we're looking at having that this Friday. Yeah, or this Friday or early coming this week.
Sooner you can do it, the better.
Right.
That'd be considered a modification, Sean.
It would be. So it's a zoning provision, normally it'd be a variance, because this is a P R D, it'd be a modification through the P R D process.
Ran it through additional use.
Yes, so you guys would make it, planning commissioner would make a recommendation, board supervisors, and board supervisors would roll on it as part of the P R D decisions.
And Barry and I, just to restate, this changes no other horizontal or vertical geometry in the road. And as I, I know you know, it's, it's turning one layer off, and when we go in print, which contours are coming out?
Hey, just for clarification, you're just isolated to those two sections. The rest of the slopes throughout the plan state a three to one, just a specific area.
That is, that is. I don't want to push my.
Just so everyone knows, if you don't remember, I'm the one who asked for this. To try to minimize disturbance of the hillside. So they're, they're not, they're not asking for it, I'm suggesting. But we have to decide if you think it's good or bad for the development and the surrounding neighborhood. But tonight, we're explaining it with the help of Weaver Homes. But Thursday night, I expect that we can say it's just good or bad. Thursday night being seventeen, twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
And I, the man, we're not here, but if, I actually like this idea very much. If it were a negligible distance, if we were gaining, if it was ten feet, and this change only gets them three more feet, who, who really knows? But I think with retaining that forest, we certainly know where our property lines is, the masons certainly know where that line is. Between sixty-five and seventy-five feet away, so that's an identifiable distance that you've got to be. Off your land, so to speak, to, to.
The only property owner affected here is the masons. And it's not affecting their property one iota. Keeping a three to one slope, the cut goes all the way to the property line. On a three to one, on a two to one, as they're showing here, it comes down sixty-seven feet. The undisturbed hillside. And of course, undisturbed, uh. Cutting of the trees, et cetera, whatever's in there. I was hoping to see the tree, uh. Report tonight, but.
I was, remember a lot, how many were, how many?
Six hundred and fifty, six hundred and fifty trees.
Stand, or we'd just be disappointed tonight.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
I was.
I just assumed that you will always try to get us the latest information based on questions and discussions.
Alberto, can I commit that in advance whether our submission is Friday, Monday, that that's a reasonably isolate that polyline? Show those trees because you've got them and then we can essentially, uh, in a supplement on eight and a half by eleven.
I think that would be good.
Okay. We will do that as quickly as possible.
The main thing here for you all to know, I think it's a good idea. It's not that you all have to agree, but we do have to agree at some time.
To waive it, to waive the three to one.
To waive three to one.
To, to a two to one.
In this area only, when you show it.
I'm in favor.
Is it six fifty, this area or the entire?
That would be all of the trees within the limit of disturbance over eight inches in diameter. So primarily, it's this area.
Primary, yeah.
The other area would be near the, um, the treatment, the other side. Behind the house.
Okay.
Further on that, behind the, um, McCoy, kind of the woods.
Yes.
These round tags on the trees, are they to be, the trees are to be removed or stay?
Uh, would depend on whether the trees coming down or not. They would all be within the limit of disturbance, so they would all come down, so the tag will.
So where the sewerage plant is going to be next to my property, they're going to take down all that little forest there.
Um, the clearing will be done within the limits of shown on the plan. On the property that we are, that we own and are developing.
What page is it? Since he's asking a question? Just so you know, I want to run this meeting with the minimal interruption from the public. But, you know, it's a reasonable question and clarify to where it's at.
Two oh one.
Two oh one.
C two oh one.
It's here somewhere.
Our two hundred would be over.
No, it's not on two oh one.
It's right here.
Here's a, where's four?
This is the trees we're just talking about. We need this one that's over here.
It's, uh, two oh four.
Two oh four.
I don't see any disturbance here, I just see the font, attention.
This is the site plan, the limit of grading would be the limit of disturbance.
Okay, I see. So you marked them trees over it so we can see it. Here?
No. You have all these contours, that's, that would be, a grant, this does not show all utility lines there. This is a site grading plan, but generally speaking, the limit of clearing will follow the limit of the proposed contours on the plan. And what we have done is locate all trees, eight inches in caliper or greater, within the limits of disturbance, i.e. grading shown on the plans.
Are you got any other information to, to apply?
No, we have no new information. However, we're very close to resubmitting with the, the outcome of plans.
I made a list of things that I don't, I don't think they're in this packet. So I'm going to ask you them right now.
Oh, okay, alright.
I would like a, uh, extension of our review. I'm going to recommend it tonight. If I can find a calendar. Right now, we have an extension to April ninth. I want to go to May sixteenth. It's not sixty days, whatever my days that is. And I'm hoping that we can have a, enough time to, uh, give you our opinion as well as the need to respond. But if all would go well, I would like to have our meeting on May sixteenth is our regular scheduled meeting. Of course, if we can't have it, might ask for additional extension, but right now, I think we need the extension to at least May sixteenth.
To be clear on the extension, I might ask Mr. Crater, extension to conduct the public hearing?
No.
Because currently, the extension granted until April ninth was the duration of the commission public hearing.
I understand that the April ninth meeting is for us to finalize our review.
The April ninth meeting was for the public hearing.
No, that's impossible.
That's what the extension that was granted was for, so there needs to be.
Which was a sixty day extension.
My feeling is we need an extension to sixteen for the planning commission. We will send it to the supervisor with an opinion.
So for the supervisors, for the due meeting, which would be?
Then whatever they need to do with public hearing would be the situation, however the number of work that's, something to be figured out.
Um, yeah, I mean, that would have to be with.
I want May sixteenth for this planning commission to make a decision, pro or con, with conditions, to send to the supervisor.
That would be something we would need a writing from the developer.
Any other questions?
Well, I, I want to ask, I'm not going to make that decision sooner because there are other ramifications to that. Is it agreeable that we can work that out?
I'm fine with that.
I don't agree with that.
You agree to say that?
I'm fine with having a conversation with them outside of.
Yeah, let's see, what, there are other?
No, I understand, I understand, yeah.
Most importantly, is the timeframe and establishing, if we were to grant an extension, I understand your position as far as how the planning commission needs to operate, but I do want to concur on some of the legal side of this. What does that mean with respect to the?
How long, how long do you need to determine it?
I'm sorry, I was, was.
How long do you need to give that an answer?
Well, I don't know that because we're going to have.
Well, yeah, we'll have to have a conversation about it. I think that we can, we can probably hook up tomorrow and start discussing. I can give you my card before you leave tonight and we can, um, exchange some emails, but we'll get on it. I mean, I'll get on ASAP with them. Um, and I imagine, you know, you would know definitely before your next meeting on the.
Well, here's, here's our problem, is the planning commission's problem. Our next meeting is the twenty first.
Yes, yeah.
If you're gonna, you're gonna hold to the April ninth meeting, we have to actually decide on the twenty first. Do you accept the plan or deny the plan?
Well, it would be a recommendation to approve or deny for the board.
With, uh, with the listed conditions?
Yeah, with a recommended list of conditions.
That's nearly impossible for.
I don't, well, I, I mean, I won't, not really possible, I mean, that's your board. But what I'm simply saying is, me saying May sixteenth is this meeting, your regular March meeting, your regular April meeting, and your regular May meeting. That's four meetings, uh, with respect to how PRD works. That's why I'm trying to do the math in my head. We've already granted a sixty day extension. Effectively, that's going to become a hundred and twenty day at a minimum extension. I need to understand with the legal proof, um, staff, what should we say, crew staff and our associate.
Uh, yeah, so I think that our response is that he's unable to agree to that tonight, but we'll discuss it and get something back to you guys this week.
To add that on?
I mean, I'll, I'll work with them. I mean, it's really, it really is dependent on, you know, what they're amenable to, so, um, I'll work with them as.
Well, just look at the, for us to hold the April ninth date, we had to be fully, completely review this by the twenty first.
To, to be clear, I, I am not holding anyone's feet to the fire on this April ninth date. I must not. However, I'm saying I need to better understand the ramifications of agreeing to a May sixteenth.
And I'm agreeing that you give the sister, on top of it, to work with them and give us an answer.
Yes, it'll be, we'll all get ahold of them tomorrow morning, I'll shoot you up, like I said, I'll give you my card.
Because I don't think we can come to a conclusion by the twenty first. In my opinion, we would deny the plan, no, in case why.
Oh, yeah, I, I see.
Thank you, thank you.
Correspondent.
We'll work on it.
Okay. I'm glad I got that out of the way. Okay, any other questions that anybody has reading the room here? And we are missing, Chris, why we are.
He's out of town.
So we are missing one member. Okay, let's start, uh, I thought it was necessary to make a decision to have a meeting with the developer. But we couldn't do it as a, a full voting meeting. So I told three guys, myself, Ed, and Gary, because Gary could make it, unfortunately, Jenny couldn't make it. And to hold a meeting with the developer to get item by item conversation with them, to determine they're agreeing with this or not agreeing with it. And, uh, as you look through this, as we go through, you'll see areas where they're saying they agree. Technically, if they agree, we probably don't need to spend a lot of time on it unless any of you don't understand what that means. So, uh, that's why, um, I had Lori send out a, uh, email to go and say, make sure you read this document because this is what we're working on. So, anybody have any questions for number one zoning? The ordinance requires that except that specifically provided elsewhere in this ordinance, no lot shall have more than one principal flow structure. This we, this, uh, refers to the quadplexes. There's twenty-five quadplexes for a hundred units. And I was told, and I, I just go back and look, there's two duplexes. Are you going to fee simple the duplexes or are you?
They would be part because of that style of living, the style of protection that remain part of the.
So there's twenty, twenty-seven buildings, a hundred and four units of quadplexes that are not going to be fee simple. So, uh, that's what this refers to. Anybody have any questions on it, concerns?
What does that mean, fee simple? As far as the stormwater tax, uh, township taxes?
The fee simple is that they could sell that unit, uh, with a lot. And it's owned by the person buying it. How's that work with the quadplexes?
The quadplexes are, the only real distinction would be in the quad you own to the unit is defined as the film of your drywall, your ceiling, your floor. A building itself is a common element, a land on which the building sits is a common element, element. Each owner, member of that association will equal share of ownership in all of the property. If you still transfer your unit, it's got its own tax ID number, it's got its own D with respect to, uh, real estate transfers. It's, it's different, but, but similar in nature.
The way they presented it, it wasn't clean and clear, so it was brought up by OSS properly. And, uh, they're going to clean up the language to clarify the quad versus fee simple. Is that right?
So as you, and those units still pay property tax, they still pay?
Each and you.
Yeah, if that was the kind of harder question, that they still be taxed, still would be, it would not start.
So they agree with that? Any questions? Number two, the ordinance requires that no cutting, filling, or other disturbing the land and natural vegetation is permissible within fifty feet of the center line of natural drainage sources. This has to do where, uh, where there's, uh, wet enough, uh, I guess they would consider wetlands?
So things both identified streams and wetlands.
I just want to have a comment on the street.
Yeah, this is for buffer streams.
That's what gave that to the.
Buffer, correct.
This one would require modifications.
Yes, and there's, there's an area of kind of no disturbance along the street.
But.
We're looking for approval from the conservation. We'll, we'll go, but there is a riflery buffer aspect of the conservation issue, we're using for their PDS permit. There's also this specific provisioned rule that's, that's separate from that. Your ordinance is intended to, planning to do conservation of the district in fifty feet, um, the buffer permitted, the compacting.
And we're saying they have to give us documentation that the permitted approval was submitted?
Well, separate aspects. They do need to show you the final that they have a permit. Township has an obligation to see that all the third party permits are in place, so that that's one part of the comment. The other part then is if they're within fifty feet of the street, signed for the permit and all that, they would need a modification to encroach there from the local ordinance.
Which we do, I, I noticed that we did agree to add a modification.
Yes, and they're going to.
And generally speaking, we were okay to proceed with what I call normal procedures, i.e. GP or whatever may be required. Permit the necessary road and/or utility process.
You have to get documentation that tells us this, in here?
Yes, I, I mean, they're going to submit modification request, they're going to identify the areas on here that they encroach, uh, you're all in that, that modification request. The, the DUP permit stuff is really final, we try to keep it together here so that they can go into decision, that sort of thing. Um, the, the, the specific focus at this point is a department from the department. That's not really a tentative thing, that'll be final. Uh, the specific focus now is modification, so they're going to submit that for this, a local ordinance requirement, a section for fifty four. That's the issue at hand for tentative.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is to make sure we don't miss it as part of the conditions or approval or.
Yeah, yeah, the permit itself, that's why it's in this letter, so we can, we pass away through to the conditions.
Yeah, I keep a track of the conditions.
To me, that is a little bit complicated, but I'm understanding it, but it can be easily overlooked.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think that Sean's doing a great job of documenting this.
Good.
And I'm thinking you put that there because you couldn't put it anywhere else, in case, like utility.
I mean, we've put it where they make sense for the most gravity flow, where they're not deeper than they need to be. Generally, in areas that reduce the disturbance required while serving the community that needs to serve, uh, with respect to DUP, I mean, that's, so I get up every morning and go to work because.
So you're pretty much anticipating that they will approve that?
That would, that would be a condition, so any like outside permits or approvals that they have to get would be a condition on tentative and final approval that they obtain of them. And honestly, I think that if the DUP denied it, then we wouldn't be their biggest problem at that point. They would have, you know, other issues with their developments, so, but it, for us, it would be a condition.
And further, if they had it denied, it created a, a change of substance to the plan, that the, before the plan changes, a lot moves, they're back apart. So there's not risk for planning commission there.
Just, if you can enlighten me. We're going for tentative approval, not?
Yes, yes.
Supervisors do final.
So supervisors do tentative and final, so what you guys are doing right now is reviewing the document, documentation to make a recommendation to the supervisors of, um, whether they should approve or deny, but the supervisors are actually granting or denying the approval. They're the ones making the actual, um, agency decision, um, to give them tentative approval.
Number three is, um, several areas need to have geo-tech testing done. And, uh, they're agreeing that they will do the geo-tech, uh, testing, but after tentative approval. So they're not doing a whole lot of work without that, knowing that this is a tentatively agreed to plan.
That's well said, and additionally, depending on your decisions on specifically the slopes, that actually would change the geo-tech report or information you're looking for. May.
Anybody have questions on that? Number four. The ordinance requires PRD A and B contain a minimum of two different types of units. This is where we're talking about the quads and the, uh, duplexes in the same family separate, that's the A and the B. They're agreeing that all be done, all the comments that are in here, so. You want to go into detail on this? No, I'm asking, I'm asking the board here. I don't want to skip over and then they just say, ah, he, he knows what he's talking about. So I really don't, so feel free to ask and to insinuate. Okay, if there's no questions on four, that's they're agreeing to. We'll go to five. The ordinance requires a building containing a throwing unit shall be arranged so as to provide easy access to emergency vehicles. We recommend the applicant should address comment of township fire chief as it relates to emergency vehicle access. And, uh, the response notes that a meeting was held with the township emergency people, Jim Scheck, I believe is here, he's our emergency manager. You still got that, Joe?
I still have it, thirty-five years.
He's been involved, he also got a copy of the plans that we had last time. Uh, do you have anything additional to add or not?
No, no, we have a meeting.
Yeah, what it states there, Weaver Homes stated a safety EMS meeting was conducted. Mr. Scheck stated in all other plans, the emergency access has never been used. Now, what that refers to is, uh, that law on cul-de-sac. The original plan had, uh, an emergency access road, which I said we don't need. It's, uh, I don't have, this is fine, we need, that we should be in here.
Two oh one out.
Two oh one? Okay, so two oh one, if you go all the way to the end of that cul-de-sac on Road H that is stated here, uh, there, they were showing a, they still are showing on this plan, a emergency access off of the cul-de-sac on Two Klein Road. I stated at several meetings that should be eliminated, there's no need for that.
We, we've agreed to eliminate it. The ones you have in front of you are from the submission leading into your, your last meeting.
Well, I want to make sure that I all understand that that's the intent of leading into the explanation. I don't see any reason for it, and Jim Scheck also stated at a meeting that the ones that we have at other developments, they've never been used. The difference between this development and other developments that are in New Swiki Township, they're in, they're going to convey the roads to the township once this is complete. So the ti, the roads are built to township specs and sizes. Other developments that have a similar situation, the roads are not to spec. And that's why I don't think we need this. The roads are big enough for emergency vehicles, et cetera.
I understand you want limited interruption. I just had one thought on that, and obviously, this does not pertain to my parcel of property. In the event there is an incident at the pipeline, it's happened with this pipeline in Centertownship. If there's a pipeline explosion, and I understand this is a off-the-wall comment, how would emergency vehicles access or how would those homes evacuate?
There's the roads, the roads that are in the development.
But those at the end of the cul-de-sac, if the pipeline exploded at that location?
If you look at the plan, the.
That's fine, it's irrelevant.
On Klein Road, I mean, it's, you could throw a potato down there if you wanted to, it's that close. So, it's not a problem.
Just drive over the bank then, on, okay.
Emergency vehicles, you can drive right up the bank and they're, they're not going to sit around worrying about, you know, the grass and whatnot. But there's plenty of access, that's what, that's what my statement is, there's plenty good access.
Okay.
And that's backed up by, uh, secondary people in the township. Anybody else have comments on, um, three?
Yeah, well, just something for Lori, even if that were to have been left there, it would have been secured, so it would not have been accessible to use, there would have been a locked gate. So I don't know, in the case you're talking about, how they would have opened it.
And break it down?
Because the emergency, like the emergency would have a key, but not residents.
Yeah, we are scoping.
Yeah, so I'm not sure in that case if it would have been helpful or not.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to four, the ordinance required, we did four, we did five.
Six.
Six. The ordinance requires no portions of tree masses and trees, et cetera, et cetera. He explained a little bit that the earlier he, engineer have gone out, they have sized all the trees and we're going to get a map where they're at and how many there are in those disturbed areas. And Weaver agreed to, you know, make sure that's done. Hopefully, we'll have that next week. Seven, the ordinance requires all floodplains, as defined, this ordinance shall remain as permanent open space in a PRD. There was some confusion on this. The plan solely notes no floodplains are displayed, they're going to put a note on the plan that, uh, will display them, right? Yes. We had pretty good talk on that stuff. So the notes will be added to the plan. Number eight. The orders require ponds, wetlands, water portions remain as permanent open space. Again, this was, um, talked about quite a bit, because it was, the way the plans look, there's not a whole lot of notes. But they're agreeing, uh, that they're gonna mark all that, and, um, the wetlands will be kept as open space. And pertinent thing on this is. We're locking one, five oh two, this. Five oh two or five oh one?
Five oh two is the first one.
I'm not sure this, but this is what was agreed to with that meeting that I said ahead prior. They're gonna protect all the wetlands here, but they're gonna create a usable lot. Agree might be a bad word.
Record, create?
They're gonna record a lot here where it fits in, but all the wetlands through here will be protected. That's why it says. Wetlands will be kept as open space and add a buildable lot. This triangle here would be a buildable lot, right here. It's down below the road, but I've seen houses built in worse places, but that's what they're agreeing to. Where's the triangle? We go across there. This is the triangle here.
This, the open space over here will be extended to protect the wetlands, the remaining triangle creating, we call it lot five oh.
This is all wetlands and they'll all be protected, but there's a big enough plot here for a buildable lot. So that's gonna be outside or inside the PRD?
That was outside, right? That five oh, the seven acres across the street, that's part of the PRD. That wasn't was, but, okay, it's, yeah, existing home.
It's existing house.
Right, yeah.
Then it would be marked buildable lot.
Yeah, but that time would be, yeah.
Comments on that?
It's about a non-complmentation.
I don't, we don't believe that it would, because it's, that'll make it comply.
Right.
If they move that to, if they, they move that lot line and the street, the wetlands are an open space, if we comply with the orders, lot line.
Sorry.
Number eight. The ordinance requires ponds, wetlands, water portions remain as permanent open space.
Yeah, here on nine.
Okay, I'm on nine. The ordinance requires no alignment, realignment, no realignment, development, file, filling, piping, concentrating of diverting. And they're saying that it would be part of the final condition. Will be a final condition. So if we out, like, I know there was a problem on the percentages of open space and wetlands. Is that open or worked out?
Um, law resubmit again. We talked through it, they're gonna clarify in the next submittal, because it mostly came down to like five oh two and like five oh three, whether in the PRD or not in the PRD. Some of the sheets, the tabulation, show them in and on, they're gonna clarify that in the resubmittal. I think that, as we discussed, that it's gonna comply then, but we'll need to verify that at next resubmittal.
So number nine has come on somewhat open and verification on the final submittal.
Number nine actually is just, that'll be a condition of approval, that's one of these third-party permits, so. In here, for documentation perspective, it'll be condition of approval, um, and then when they come in for final, they'll need to provide documentation. When they get approval, final approval, that'll be a condition to carry through before they actually start work, so.
So they don't meet the open space requirement with odds five oh one and five oh two?
We were fine on open space.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're mixing two things.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Well, the, what is the?
They're going to show in their resubmittal that they comply with open space, I believe keeping five oh one and dropping five oh two.
Dropping five oh two.
Yeah, that's to be confirmed when they submit, that's the anticipation, I guess. If they're sure, then they won't even take you for a modification request, and the anticipations are compliant with the open space.
You talked about submittal. You, you suggesting a lot of this stuff will be for our next meeting?
I'm ready.
On the, on the twenty-first?
Yeah, I wrote down all the comments.
Okay. The more we get us, the less complicated this will be on an item-by-item basis.
The intention, in fact, the extension is, we, we intend that Friday or Monday, we resubmit addressing all of these comments, hopefully, to let us miss any more satisfaction. With adequate time that you can consider them in advance of your March twenty-first meeting. Hopefully, we've got a clean letter that's just down to sort of place marker type items, that if you're not forgotten in final, that items like open space, that's off the, you know, Sean's able to say they can apply.
So that means to all of us here that, that, that comes, you have to take some time and read it. Get ready for your questions at the twenty-first meeting. So we can have a good conversation. Number ten. Orders require areas with slopes fifteen to twenty-five percent, no more than seventy-five percent of such areas shall be regraded, strip the vegetation developed. Construction of dwelling roads in the areas with slopes between twenty-five and forty-five percent, no more than thirty percent can be regraded, stripped of vegetation. However, the supervisor may approve limited regrading for the construction of such obstructing or installation of road utilities, similar facilities, which cannot be located elsewhere. Okay, it all came down to, there's an A and a B, previous comment, previous comment. On A, Sean will state ten A is acknowledged through the process, meaning that if you go through the process, you'll prove certain, certain things that they apply, identify.
Yeah, disturbance of these slopes is not a modification, this is an acknowledgement, as you go through, and the supervisors, it these are necessary to create the roads, that sort of thing. So that's A, and then B was just to include the trail, to make sure we have the entirety of the disturbed area encapsulated. So we'll update tabulation in the, in the resubmittal, we'll again check the numbers there, but we anticipate that they're gonna comply with this section of modifications. And to be verified. Anticipation is a.
Then on B.
But before we move off of A, just for only clarification, we do get the supervisor. I think we agree, that is not, we're not proposing obstruction.
Correct.
Okay, so with respect to that even being a comment. I don't necessarily wanna debate that, I just don't want that to be a
sticking.
A sticking point hanging out there, uh, because it would have been reckless.
That B has to do with the two-to-one slope suggestion of mine to Weaver Homes. And they presented that documentation tonight. You all need to look at that and determine if you think that's a good idea. I'm agreeing that's a good idea.
What about the, who's in the, if we're wrong, we'll come soon.
That'll be a, uh, a, uh, engineer's report that, uh, LSS would look at, how they're gonna drain it, key it and drain it.
Yes, that'd be part of the final geo-tech report, the stability calculation. Grade it so that it's blockable, there's mixed opinions throughout the world on the trail, be asked for concrete, stone, wood chips, or anything else.
Well, they are showing on the plan, I don't think of the original, but it's on this one. They're showing a trail.
Yeah, I just, I just go to show them.
I don't think it's a good idea myself, but there's pro and con to having trails run through the buildings. If I had my drudgers, I'd say eliminate the trail over there. But there are people that say that we'd like to have a trail. But really, it's up to the HOA, which they are going around on right now. And Weaver Homes would be talking on their behalf. So we have to decide, do we want the trail, do we think it's a good addition? I think the comments from LSS is to make it a true walking trail without grading.
Well, it's to quantify the disturbance as it relates to the, this comment specifically, as it relates to the slopes. If there is no grading, shut outside of the limit of disturbance. I think we discussed that it's going to be in the limit of disturbance, they're gonna clarify through a detail of what that disturbance is. Include that in the, in the tabulation there to show why it's, it's. The, the surface configuration really wasn't part of this comment, the ordinance isn't prescribed it, so it, it's really slow to start.
Okay, go with that? Number eleven. Orders require a ten percent total common space shall be in active recreational facilities, such as playfield, playgrounds, courts, community, multi-purpose buildings, and similar uses. Clarify proposed active recreational facilities within open space areas. And then it, uh, the plan proposes a trail and community center. One point one acres of active recreation space associated with the community center. One point eight acres associated with the trail, limits of active recreation spaces, just talking about. I think we will say, wait, that they agree with that. Do they need a trail to meet anything in the ordinance, or just trail is considered additional open space?
I, I guess I don't, I don't have an answer to that as we talk here. Our question was, in the response, it was basically the assertion that we've got one point one acres of active recreation and one point eight of
Trails.
Uh, trail.
Associated.
Associated with a trail. We wanted to delineate that in the plan, so it's clear of what that one point one and one point eight correspond to. If those are accurate, and I'm assuming that they are, so. There'll be a tentative comment, we memorialize those when we pick this up in six months or two years, ten years, we know what assumptions we made for one point one and one point eight. That area is in, I, I don't remember off the top of my head whether, if we drop the trail, if we still go to the threshold of what was required. We need to look at that with the resubmittal. If they had extra area, or if they were right at, they were right above the bar.
We need.
We need the trail to go.
Right, so they need the trail. Introduction of the trail allowed access to an active recreation area, if we drop the trail out, they need to avoid, this committee's involved. Where's your active recreation, how would you get there, you need a trail, that's the trail.
So then you have the answer, they need the trail to be their quota for active recreation.
So is that a four-foot wide trail?
It is. I'm sorry, I'm busy, I'll with the.
I would imagine it would be. Me and her, as best we can, to save trees and make it a five or six feet wide.
You're saying they have to have the trail to meet walk.
Well, your ordinance requires active recreation areas, and one of the ways that you can do that is to provide walking access through wooded areas.
I agree with that. I just don't like the trail. I don't want people walking around the back of my house, I can't see who they are. But that's me. Number twelve. The ordinance requires all structures, recreational facilities shall be situated at least seventy-five feet off of all public roads. There was a, um, email that went out, uh, this week, I think that's all been worked on, clarified, it's not an issue. Approve courts at the clubhouse encroaching to the required seventy-five feet setback. No change, the response notes, et cetera. The comments from Weaver Homes, pickleball courts will not be lighted, discussion occurred if it is considered a structure or facility. Stated it is considered a structure. Agree that an extra buffer will be added without affecting sightline, system will, or stated modification will need to be requested. This is actually a somewhat of an argument. The, uh, pickleball courts, uh.
Three oh three.
Three oh three. The pickleball courts actually extend into the seventy-five foot buffer area. And, uh, whether we should allow that or not, even with the added landscape. They said they will over landscape it, just hide it, but it still is in the seventy-five foot.
This is the court here.
This is the court here. Uh, this is the. I'm sorry, this is the court.
Parking lot. This is the building.
I think that's the court.
This is the building.
Court.
Uh, okay. So.
We've got a, we've got two problems, I guess. Courts are in the buffer, what about that? What about the parking lot?
Parking lot's not restricted from being, it's a, a structure or a recreational facility. So, um, parking lot can be, to leave a pickleball court here would be a modification.
Single judge.
Yeah, it looks like it's like forty now, huh?
Comments have been made that, uh, some of you may, you don't want to allow intrusion on the seventy-five foot buffer. Now's the time to throw it out there, if that's the case. What could be done to not have it in the buffer area?
Fortunately, except we go away.
I would see the problem, you know, with just having traffic on that side. Having traffic from the rail on that side.
That house is fighting when we do it, then.
I, I guess I would like to mention that, at least in my opinion, I know this is a subjective one, but the implementation, proposal of having an earth and mound with vegetation, trees, evergreen trees, but not on top. My gut, from a sound standpoint, is going to do more to reduce sound, and certainly the visual, than a pickleball court being thirty more feet away from the road. That's my opinion, I know I.
So just as clarification, the, who your anticipation is, is your resubmittal is going to be a modification request to say we're gonna provide extra buffering mound, whatever, in lieu of additional space as a proposed equal or better.
Yes, exactly. And for these, I'd say review whether anyone agrees, is equal or better. They may not agree with me.
Right, but that's gonna be the response for this.
I can't read the, just a stone man hold tool.
Well, you got like forty feet in there to, to play with. We don't wanna be twelve feet tall, but we went both side slopes to the three-to-one, so you can probably come up six feet. Um, so I'd be, uh, six, sixteen, eighteen, thirty-six, with a five-foot top, say, a three-to-one, a three-to-one slope, or a, or a flat top on, on which we would plant evergreen trees, so effectively. So effectively, the day we plant the tree, you're gonna have a, a fifteen foot tall tree to the top, the bottom nine feet, for, for six feet being dirt.
Are you talking present that just in the front side, or are you gonna circle it?
We'd probably end up for our own purpose, we could circle it. Why did I have the room that before I had? Yeah, we could come around, yep, hold on three feet.
Come around the east side, there you go.
Come around the east side. We, we don't want that, we don't wanna be noisy neighbors. I know that an earthen mound is gonna do a lot more than thirty extra feet of air. It's not dying, it's not the only way.
Any comments? Think about it till twenty-first?
Is this a, is that not the duplex right? That's, that's a quad. Yeah, that's quad, I see.
Your duplex, it's one, it's, it's that, that would be one of those, there's the other.
Okay. Give that consideration, we got thirteen, and the ordinance requires a proposed
But before we move on with that, if, if they're truly our comments, I, I really would appreciate hearing them, to Mr. Horn's point about, you know, more time and needing more time, what I, what we're trying to do, as this, the spirit of this being a workshop, is to get your, your position, so that we don't, uh, spend, kill a bunch of trees to print a whole lot more paper to come back on the twenty-first, to then hear, we don't want that, or we won't consider it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I thought I'd try to make a
One, I drew on your, but, I mean, the first thing that comes to mind when I look at it, if that wasn't a quad and it was a duplex, then you wouldn't be able to stay within the seventy-five, right? If you get rid of two, and the shit pays down, then there's no modification.
This was a, making that a duplex doesn't change this way at all.
Cut this in half.
No, you can't give, you can't do it that way. Yeah, you'd have a
There's no access.
Yeah.
Doesn't this have, that's access too?
So you, you would have the access, but you'd have a forty-five, you'd have a blank wall, yes. You know what, you ought to associate something, we could do that, but would be, we didn't even like doing it when we cut it the other way. At least there we could add windows, which is more
Well, I know there's been comments about intruding on that buffer zone. We talked about it the last time, and there's been off comments in the last couple of weeks, you by phone call, just running into each other. So, I know there's concern. The main thing we talked about at our last meeting was additional landscape.
That's what we agreed to.
And you're bringing that up again. Issue was how much they're gonna be used.
Well, we did stipulate, you know, no use after dark, there'll be no lighting on them. This isn't something that extends into especially, turn clocks back, they're closed at dusk.
So it's a concern.
Yeah, I understand.
The final decision obviously isn't made on that particular one, but I do know there's concern. Whether to allow that. So if just one of them can't be decided to
Add the trail.
Yep.
What's around, what's around the pool, is there a, a fence or?
There'd be a fifty-four inch tall, no more than four inch gap between the, the pickets. Um, it will meet, uh, all of, there's your accessibility standards, your safety standards, auto locks, um, there'll be a concrete pool deck
Yeah.
Around it, and then we'll probably ten feet on the one side, chaseology, and then, um, that's, and we can certainly acknowledge that, you know, that's your approval, does not grant, we still have a whole hurdle of
Yeah.
Of, of, of accessibility and safety requirements that, I'm not sure if your building codes guys are here, but, okay, so, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, thirteen and fourteen, they're agreeing to, and it has to do with, uh, waiting till they get the tentative approvals to start doing the, uh, testing and whatnot that needs to be done. The main thing that you have to, I, I think they're both reasonable to wait. Fifteen, the ordinance requires the adequacy of the existing street and road capacity, safety to, to carry the additional traffic generated by the proposed development shall be demonstrated by the traffic impact study, which we got, you know, you all got one? We do have it, I've read it. It's not fun reading. But it's there. Um, comments, uh, Shaun's comments regarding the submitted traffic impact study will be provided, I guess it came after this. And status, traffic review comments have been incorporated into the correspondence. And the, uh, decision was old pending OSSC review of traffic study. I've rode up there a dozen times, I did read the traffic study. It's hard to really detail what it is saying, it has all the terms, how many turns, what time of day, all that stuff. It, it's pretty technical. But my, uh, my main concern is Klein Road itself. I have two here, two concerns. One, there's two, there's one very sharp turn, and there's another semi-sharp turn at the south end of the, the south, west end of the, well. Um, we brought it up several times with, uh, with Brett, and, uh, he's certainly indicating he can possibly alleviate a minimal amount of, uh, curvage there. He calls it softening the curves, and, uh, but he's never submitted anything to say, here's what it would look like. I, again, wrote up it many times, I read the report. The curves are one issue, the other issue is the condition of Klein Road as it currently is. And I think what needs to be done there is, um, the berms have to be redone on the road itself, and it would have to be done from one end of the development down to that sharp curve. And we need a wearing surface on Klein Road to complete it, assuming, I assume LSS would do a, a, uh, walkover there, see if there's any bad pavement on Klein Road. I don't see bad pavement, I do see bad berms. So, my feeling is, we're gonna have to fix the berms of, of Klein Road, and, uh, there should be a wearing surface on Klein Road. The curves, I've done it by own drawing, I knew you all were laughing at this, but I'm gonna show you anyways.
There you go, right, that term, that's all you want.
No, I, I actually drew them.
Oh, you drew on this, uh?
I don't know, it's going on the screen. Keep coming. Maybe it's not on this, maybe it's on the other plane, I might just Yeah, it's on, I'm sorry. I did a, a, uh, a straight line, which is the worst case scenario, but I think in the end it might be the best case scenario. Basically a hundred or two hundred feet before Hoffman Road, straight down to the main turn over here, a straight line. And the only way I could see common sense to do that, you would put, uh, bridge abutments in and actually put a bridge across the worst part of that. It would be far enough over the hill that you're minimizing any, uh, wetlands interference, that's the intent. I'm sure it would be a million dollars, unless you're exaggerating it at all. I've talked to Brett several times, only given us an idea of what to do there, and you guys have come up with anything. So
Alberta, when, when you ran your section through there, what did we come up with, a stream closure, three hundred and some feet?
Yeah, we were three hundred feet, and even the well of disturbance was half an acre.
And we were forty-two feet in the area, so, so we, we did run, basically took as best we could, your alignment, Mr. Horn, and said, what, what does that really look like?
That's what I was trying to get, right? I come up with two hundred and fifty feet, but I'm not
So you did, you did get, you know, a three hundred foot stream enclosure, forty-two foot of fill on, on top of that road, with, did you even size the pipe, it's probably, you could probably walk through it.
Well, my intent was not to disturb the stream at all, we put a bridge across.
It'd be several hundred feet.
Can't hear you.
It'd be several hundred feet across.
Yeah. Is that a better idea than, you know, either fill or retaining, well, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, but I mean, two hundred foot bridge, millions and millions of dollars.
Millions or a million?
Millions.
Millions, yeah.
Does that come out that way? See, I had that conversation. I had this conversation with Joanne, that's why I'm asking her.
And what did I tell you?
Not like that.
This looks like about six hundred.
I wouldn't even be able to venture a guess.
I'm not, I'm not
I mean, we, we could be at a million dollars in engineering for a, for a two hundred and fifty foot free span bridge.
But that probably means he won't get the permit.
Yeah, over, but you only have to bridge this, this
That was my first comment, he won't get the permit.
How about if you took his culvert and extended it out and filled it?
Any disturbance of the wetland's gonna take pretty major permitting if you do. And, you know, if they even end up allowing you to do it. That's why I thought if you went out here and get over this, get away from all this and just bridge it, you know, you know. And I was trying to just say, what would that cost, and I know it's expensive and
A bridge still requires a permit.
Well, I agree with that, I'm not disputing. So, the way I'm looking at it is, in lieu of that drastic of a, uh, condition, that, uh, we ought to look at a traffic impact, uh, fee and get an escrow to attack this at a later date, meaning it could be ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, when there's other possible development and get more money, maybe you could fix that the way it should be fixed, whatever that ends up should be. So, I'm saying in lieu of straightening that out, which I know is the worst case scenario, would be for any developer.
What would be for any one, any entity?
Well, I think the township is gonna have to address it at some time, years down the road, because there's in, increased traffic, it's a, it's a bad intersection, a bad piece of road, and, uh, we're gonna need to look at down the road what can be done. So
Why do you wanna soften this, or is it more easier to soften this?
It's a cemetery.
There's a few people
Those people are not too happy.
There's a few prominent residents there.
Yeah. Yeah. Exactly.
There's little ways where you're here, that may
What, what is that, what's the actual fee for that traffic impact fee?
What is the escrow fee?
What's the actual?
I, Alan, I didn't even calculate what was straight in that road.
No, I am not asking for that, we already determined it's over a million.
Right.
So, if we ask the developer, or charge the developer a fee for life, it'll be escrow for future road repairs.
So I didn't have a chance to talk with Shaun about this.
On the traffic impact study, did it show that the traffic is coming from Cranberry here? This is gonna be very little
Yeah, the, the way I read it, I'm not an expert at reading that kind of report, probably ninety percent of traffic is going into Cranberry. Some is going down Hoffman, not a lot, but some.
Very little going, ten percent going the other way.
That's the way I read it, I'm in the Here's the report. And it's full, it's full of, uh, this, this kind of stuff. It shows you the intersections and then all the different turns, and how many vehicles make those turns.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of, there's probably a hundred of them in here. I probably picked certain intersections, and I understood it just a wee little bit, and I was gonna ask the LSS to give us a clearer understanding of what this actually says.
Have you reviewed that yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Our comments are in here, they, they were, the, the comment we're on just kinda refers to the end of the year, so they are at the end of the year. We, we do have comments, um, relative to, some of the stuff that Mr. Horn mentioned, take a look and, you know, provide a response as to geometric, um, cross-sections, like, what the roads there, improvements need made, that sort of thing. Um, developers can respond to those and we'll evaluate there. They have proposed some signage improvements, um, I think they're looking at some others, and we do want them to look at geometry and condition, that sort of thing. Uh, where that comes out, we're gonna look and react and, and, um, go from there, we, that is a standing comment.
Just on the report is these pages right here. You know, we, we can read it, we can understand it, it comes to conclusions, all of this is documentation. What's this actually mean? I tried to figure this out.
So, so that's from, it's the ITE, so the Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Manual. There's this big book that has every use you can think of under the sun, it says for, you know, a certain amount of square footage, or a certain occupancy, or for dwelling, you know, a certain number of density, how many trips are anticipated if you build fifty houses .
So what does this actually mean? I know probably there's a high density here, but
So for the, following this access for the number of dwelling units, if you had a thousand dwelling units in the plan, you'd come up, these are, all these access are different studies, so they did, whatever's on there, fifty, a hundred, different developments that studied, this is the best fit curve, um, to try to put all these into the data set, so if you had fifteen hundred lots, then you'd anticipate there'd be, whatever, twelve, thirteen hundred PMP tower trips, they're just all there.
So there, since it's a two hundred, two fifty, uh,
There
Development, this is where all the action is, right here.
And then they, they normalize that to this equation here, that, um, you know, the, the variable in there is number of loans, and then that gives you trips.
It, it's interesting, not for a novice to read, you know, so that's why we need the LSS to, I just need that, just of it is right here.
Yeah, that's the narrative.
If anybody wants this, I have it, if you don't have it, and I did read it. So, I'm saying what we need to consider. Wearing surface on Klein Road, repair the berms on Klein Road, and escrowing money per lot for future repairs needed in the area of the development, mainly this problem area. And this will be most affected if there's any future development going down Klein Road. You know, that'll make this more important of how to, um, resolve that problem. There was a fatality here, I don't know how many years ago, probably Right around where Farmhouses. So, it's not like if, nothing can happen because it could. But they're proposing a three-way stop here at Hoffman. And I believe each intersection there is, this one stops. Do you have any comment for a fee per lot to be escrow for future road work?
Having just heard that, I would say I would not necessarily outright oppose traffic impact fee per lot. Not a model, obviously, to be determined. With respect to how that may, or should say may, will affect the ability to do anything else, certainly cannot answer yes to all of the above.
Just throwing it out there, I don't believe I brought it up to you before.
Pardon?
I don't believe I brought it up to you before.
No, we hadn't. But I will say I'd be open to a conversation about all, somehow a combination of those three elements. Noting, however, that I believe our plan is now to do, expand the existing right-of-way to be fifty feet regardless of where that is.
Yeah, I did bring that up, that is.
And that is done, whether I end up doing some of that burn work or that burn work, that right-of-way will exist for the township in the future to have an additional six and a half feet on either side of the road in which improvements is the township.
That's in there.
Could also be.
Well, if something, you need to guide us on that, what you think. And then do an overview of that report, of what it really means, okay? It's a good, it's, whenever we get into the stuff of how traffic develops and whatnot, it's a good report. Okay. I think we're on sixteen there.
We don't get to know. Do we have to wait until the meeting to find, like, what are the anticipated trips increased? Can we just get that?
Very minimal.
Very minimal, like twenty cars?
I was surprised it was so. I think it's, I don't have an exact number, but it even says in the report, it's very minimal, very minimal. Doesn't register on their normal big.
So has the township considered doing a third-party study? Is that something that the engineers would typically do in a situation like this?
No reason to do it if they did a, if developer supplied the report and it's complete, and it looks to be, these guys will determine it. There'd be no reason to go further, to spend money, nothing to gain by. Very minimal, I was surprised how minimal it was, I don't remember the numbers. It states that way, so this is very minimal impact on existing roads. Yeah, the whole, the whole report is based on, as Sean explained earlier, that these are federal calculations that are used for us in country. And they base it on how big a development it is, how it's being used. And then they plug all these numbers in, puts up. But on these terms issues, I believe they actually went up, had somebody sit there, whether for a day or for four o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning, that kind of stuff, and they actually calculate how many cars were currently going through there. And of course, that's plugged into that calculation ratios and it, you know, kind of says, yeah, this happened, this is pretty much, pretty close.
I understand, I guess my question is just questioning the accuracy of it. And would it be, you know, would it be valuable for the township to consider doing an independent study?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it. It's really up to the developer to provide the material and then the township reviews it. That's normally how things go for subdivision land developments. The township doesn't generate its sort of reports or studies or things like that. And also, it's a pretty costly study to generate. So, I think having L S S review it is probably the best procedure. It's the ordinary procedure that we would use in this type of setting.
In a rural setting?
In any setting.
In any setting, okay.
That's the regular land development, subdivision and land development review process is that they would provide the information and we would review it.
Thank you.
Okay, on sixteen is pretty much what I was already asking and explaining. Burns, wear surface on Klein Road, that's my notes. They have to add site distance tables, which are standard. For your border plate information. Seventeen, the ordinance requires landscaping in accordance with section. Shall be provided for every ten parking spaces, previous comment tabulation required. Provided landscape that has not been provided, I think they have provided it since. The plan indicates seven required parking lot trees. Shade tree must be provided within interior of each parking lot. The proposed configuration solely includes five trees with interior parking areas. There was pretty good discussion on this, needs to be tweaked, I guess is the best way.
We just added one island and put an additional tree.
If we have on here, they have to revise the overall plan. Eighteen, the ordinance requires lighting in accordance with the sections. Shall be provided off-street parking area, previous comment, the light plan has not been provided for the clubhouse. And they're not going to do any lighting in the clubhouse, from the way I understand it. Weaver Homes, no proposed parking lot lighting. Sean asked if lighting is required, it should be shown in preliminary plan. My question, we talked about this, but we did talk about whether we want lights at the intersections inside the development, whether we should require them or not. Township has minimal lights throughout the whole township, probably the economy on one hand makes. I don't know if it's a benefit to the development to have lights at, street light at an intersection.
I guess the best answer I've set this stage, well, with each, each residence will have a post light in its front yard, is a relatively shallow front yard. So there is light cast from that post light that's lighting up the driveway or sidewalk. It's not a football field out on the street, but there is, there is lighting. For every person that I have that loves having that post light and they want them, I've got one that says shine in my whatever window.
Well, I wasn't sure, I know you talked about it and I didn't remember your answer, but.
Well, it said on the parking lot, if it's desirous, we'll add lighting in the clubhouse parking lot, they have post light at each corner and potentially, not potentially, and wall pack lighting or wall lighting at the entrances for safety and visibility purposes. But outside of that, we, as I recall, we were not being asked or required to put lighting at intersections. That's my recollection, but I don't.
Well, I didn't know at the time or didn't remember that you were putting one at every driveway, I guess.
Right, it's really.
If you have that, I don't think you need additional lights at the intersections.
I would agree. Well, yes, we could show, well, what we agreed was on our tenant for now, which is show the light pole location at final, the photometrics will come in so that the warrants are there that we're not lighting up the neighborhood or exceeding the foot candles. It's a property, I don't believe there's actually a defined photometric requirement in the ordinance, but we would demonstrate the photometric.
Just reading the notes, it said no proposed parking lot lighting. Is the clubhouse not going to be used in the evenings?
No, it can't be, that's what it said, I'd like to put lighting if it meets your approval, because it is used in the evening. Certainly in the daylight savings hour, you know, in the fall where it's dark at four-thirty. But again, that light being limited in design such that it's not passing across the street, being Klein Road or would like to put, I would venture two, maybe fourteen-foot tall lights, something like that, street parking lot lights.
Al, is that new? The requirement to have a lighting in the parking lot?
If they're using it at night, yes, I believe it is.
And also, Brett limits the light pulse to twelve feet.
Twelve feet, okay, there you go. Parking lot lighting, twelve feet tall.
You said two?
I'd venture, yeah, because our, our building itself will have lighting on it.
Yeah.
So that would pick up your sidewalk and your parking spaces nearest the building, the drive aisle, and I would envision the lights pointing back towards the building at the opposite end of the parking lot from the building. That fix us? Any page will work, there's a light. I mean, it wouldn't, I just want to make sure that, so we'll have to carefully place it because that one, although I have the parking in the seventy-five, it's not, so, and maybe it goes there and there.
Okay. I'm going to have to move quick here because I know one or two of the guys and people here are going to have to leave. If we don't get this all done tonight, we will schedule another meeting sometime to see how it works out. Nineteen has to do with the fire departments and the placement of fire hydrants. And that's all been taken care of, it's been, a meeting was held here with the fire departments, public safety and, I don't know who else. Somebody else and they did fire hydrants, they did all the numbering for the postal service, all that kind of stuff. And given to the post office already, I believe. Twenty, the ordinance requires lighting facilities shall be designed, shielded, located. Okay, we just went over that, then there is a part in the ordinance and they're going to follow that as needed. Twenty-one, I did, there was a concern from the zoning officer, but it's been taken care of. Twenty-one.
Parking area landscaping.
And it's marked here completely, so. Twenty-two, the ordinance requires the entire perimeter of this track under development shall be provided with a fitted buffer. And that is, there is a plan page that shows all that. I think there might be some discussion on the type of trees. I know that people in Modrick question it. I'm not sure what the trees actually are. What kind of trees are around the perimeter of the.
Do we have a landscape schedule? Yeah, there's a landscape schedule.
I've seen it, I couldn't figure it out.
Uh, well.
I know pretty well. There's, there's big trees and then there's.
There's a canopy, big understory, like an ornamental or a shrub. It works together, you know, it should be an L something. L one hundred, I've always.
I guess what we're trying to figure out is. Yeah, species, that's one of the.
Right, so your species are listed, now you have, I'm assuming of this, this species list is all of the available township approved trees. Right, so, we didn't go through, that's a red maple, that's a silver maple, that's a, these are what's allowed to be, these are how they're qualified.
Oh, we do have, sorry, I'm sorry, we do have.
Oh, no, you do, yeah.
Yeah, we show different trees along the line on Modrick.
Right, these different, all these symbols are identified here, obviously they're tough to see here. Yeah, well, if you go to the detail, go to. Yeah, if you go to, flip the, flip the next page, maybe you have to call back and forth, but these, these zoom in.
Is there any pine trees in there?
Yes.
I was cautioned about pine trees many years ago because they have a disease or more later types of pines had diseases and they were dying off quite quickly.
There are white pines and Norway spruces. And the primary evergreens proposed by.
Now, I know, Roy, we had, when we talked to him about the cemetery, I told him we don't want any pine trees in there because the roots are too close to the ground and it's real easy to blow over and you have all kinds of problems with those.
What's the year guaranteed for planting? Guaranteed for three years, five years?
Well, typically my landscaper worked with me within a year, if it gets through a year, it's going to get live. I don't know your landscape ordinance still enough to know.
Is that overseen by the H O A when it's all done?
Yeah, the next comment is to develop a maintenance and care program to, there are places at the top of the hill, I'm looking if there was a weed whacker that goes back to Mother Nature, so I don't mean to imply that everyone was going to get emultrin every year. Additionally, as we develop the master association budgets, structure and its role, that will have allocations of funds to go in and replace or restore whatever the case may be for those, for those buffer replacements. Which is not to say that tree lives forever, you know, it dies.
Do we do that? Make sense?
Yes. A lot of these will likely be revisited and filed for each phase to a specific tree or a different species. Yes.
Yeah, it's actually an extra statement, it's one hundred. It's, they're all been approved. Twenty-five, ordinance requires B R Ds, proposed re-destructive stages. And they're going to tweak them a little bit as we talked at the last meeting. Those two cul-de-sacs are going to be added to different sections and it's going to be a three-phase development instead of a four-phase. And see, I think that's the right thing to do. See, I have a problem with that, but look it over, see what you think. Twenty-six, the number, little, eighty-six, exhibit is provided. Sean, it'd be, yeah, three to five and one, five and two, commit against.
Yeah, it's really, it's pretty unclear, I'm trying to think.
They're working on that. Twenty-seven, ordinance requires that the plan provide the number of type missing, types of toll units. They have done that. They're agreeing to it. Twenty-eight, the ordinance requires the plan provide existing and proposed rights-of-way easements, so. The H O A will maintain those easements. A on that twenty-eight, the developer to revise plans such that the interior road F will be open space. They're working that out with Sean, L S S. B, they're agreeing to access easement is solely notified, leader, weak limits of access. Easement have been provided, they're agreeing, agreeing that it is done and they will clean up the next proposal that they submit. C. C, same thing, just clean up stuff. Twenty-nine, the same. Thirty, the ordinance requires a plan to show location type and size of all lines, facilities, and the BRD is to be served by existing systems. The plan shall show the proposed connections and include optimization of the actual system to handle the additional capacity on the municipal. Status is no change. Comment is gas line being run through Cranberry is to be fully shown on the plan. We were home from contact gas company for them to inform them of interest. The staff is working on that, they're collecting and names of all residents around the development. That's being worked on to try to make gas available to Modrak, Klein.
Klein, Hoffman, Modrak, Water Lane, Rose Lane.
Keep us updated on that, all right? Thirty-one had to do with, uh, sidewalk connections at intersections and the, uh, agree that they'll be doing that, they did show us where that comes in. I don't know. I think it's the Klein and.
Cross from Hoffman, they're shipping some of the pedestrian will cross that and stop sign instead of.
Go to the main.
Road C there, she'll go to cross one, whatever, fifty feet before the intersection, cross add here, where they stop sign.
So they're tweaking that, making it work to benefit the, uh, pedestrian traffic. I think we want the next one down. We'll get it here. Taking too much time to look at. It's not right here, from here, from this cul-de-sac here down to Hoffman, we create a sidewalk, the crosswalk there. That's being worked on.
This thirty-one.
Thirty-two. Looks like it, all they gotta do is add notes and that is satisfied, uh, L S S. Thirty-three, they're gonna submit the administrative documentation to L S S. Thirty-four. They have to do some work on the signage that they're gonna use up there. And, uh, that hasn't been submitted yet, but they will be adding. Thirty-five is the ordinance requires a development schedule indicating the approximate date when the final application for each stage will be filed with the township. Has not yet been provided, but they will be providing. You know that, um, I wanna hold off, I wanna, wanna do subdivision. And I'm gonna go to, um, other, some other comments that I wrote down, I know some of you are gonna have to leave, I wanna get, get this in there. It has to do with the driveways on the Klein Road. Do we have a page with, uh? I have stated several times, but mainly my opinion, but I was using comments made by some of you too. That we do not want driveways on the Klein Road. And right now, in the latest plan, they're showing six units with driveways directly on the Klein Road. I stated, we do not want that. And, uh, Brett has commented several times, there's nothing they can do about it. The original plan that we were given way back when, very first set of drawings showed a through, a through road here, or maybe a cul-de-sac road here to take care of eight lots. Well, they softened it by taking two of them out. I just don't feel that that's a good development for a BRD to have, uh, traffic from the development directly onto Klein Road. I need to hear what you guys say, or Brett maybe needs to hear what you all think. And, uh, I would have thought by now, they would have given us a preliminary of what maybe could be done, but they have not done that either.
I'll, I'll answer that, we have, we have extensively looked at that. And given maintaining compliance with the three to one slope, pointing out that the original plan did show that parallel road was developed prior to the field delineation of the streams and wetlands in that area. So what we would be doing is essentially building a road parallel to Klein for nine hundred feet. And having those lots, you know, back spacing Klein as opposed to the front spacing Klein, noting that they do, as proposed, meet the seventy-five foot perimeter setback with those particular lots, a turnaround on each driveway, essentially.
I can't, true, on this, but what about this?
From conception, you could agree here that their issue is at three to one, you get up to where they need to be. You know, you need.
Can you tell me what it is from here to there?
Score and allocation.
I'm a little slow on this stuff, I figured you guys would know. I think these are two foot segments, right?
My name?
So it's eleven thirty. Right now, it's eleven thirty. And what, what do you need beyond this, right here? You've got a sanitary going in there, you've got a man, uh, what's, what's this other one, I can't read. This is sanitary, this is just, uh, right of way, right? Right of way to.
That's the easement containing the sanitary. In order for all of this to work, essentially, you know, you take, this, this house can't move, it's because the, the rear has, has to comply with the seventy-five foot. This would mirror the front setback, the right of way, you can get in here, I'm filling in the rounds.
Well, these are areas where maybe we could help by minimizing the setbacks and whatnot. We just, I am totally against these driveways on Klein Road, period. And I made that clear.
But you have, and I've never.
So I want. I want these guys to know, if this is the time to speak up, the last time to speak up will be at the seventeenth meeting. To give them direction of what we will, will allow here. I might need Sean's help.
It wouldn't help if we'd allow them a two to one, so grading. And minimize the seventy-five.
Well, just based on what Brett said, yeah, I'd consider that, as well as I'd consider minimizing the setbacks on, on the houses.
Let me, let me, we are, not that your concern is one of my finances. But we have been very long at this with those lots as they're proposed. We have studied them, they meet sight distance criteria, they do not represent a danger with respect to somebody pulling out on those roads, as was evidenced by the traffic study, it's six lots, a trip generation out of those wouldn't, it wouldn't even register in a, in a traffic study with respect to, oh, there's so much traffic coming out of those six homes. Obviously, there's traffic, but, um, it's, it's virtually immeasurable. The ordinance does not proclude, at least in my opinion, in any way, the, the proposal of those lots. The reduction from eight to six wants to serve as if in the event you had someone, an odd chance, somebody coming out making a right out of their driveway and a left out of another, that added, you know, another car length and a half for that crossing movement and the, again, unlikely event that it would happen because if I'm making a right, I'm on the right lane, I'm, we're not crossing, we're not, we're not competing lefts, if that makes sense. And if, if everybody's turning right or left, it doesn't matter. So it'd be one, one left movement, one right movement and one left movement, the cars pass, hence the reason for, uh, you know, for eliminating them. Additionally, uh, the, the guidance at our two meetings ago, um, that we had, Kevin Brett's, um, Sean's colleague, Atlanta Smith, at his request, we shortened several of the cul-de-sacs, if you all recall. The intent of that being we could maintain that lot and count, but reduce the footage of road, we eliminated two hundred foot, one hundred and ninety-two feet of road elsewhere in the plan. The, the inclusion of this road with, at nine hundred more feet of road, for a net seven hundred four meters, seven hundred more feet of road at the same lot. And I certainly understand Mr. Horn's position in that, you know, it's a busy road, um, oh, she says it's a busy road. It's, it's traffic's moving faster on Klein than, than internal of the plan.
At some time, it would be.
Each and every person being able to turn around and be pointed in the correct direction, never passing.
I need help. What do you guys?
And I please believe, we have looked, I've looked at cul-de-sacs, I've looked at through streets, I've looked at every option.
So, I think I had two questions. One, is it, do you do this fairly often? Put some houses that, that access outside of the development as opposed to being fully.
We have done it before, I would say it's not common.
He has to keep the seventy-five.
Honestly, it's not.
Can't change that.
Uh, it's not preferable, but it's from an infrastructure standpoint that I don't. It doesn't make any sense, I'm building a road seventy-five foot away from another, but it's, to achieve the same. It's more stormwater, it's more impervious area, it's more storm drain lines, more water lines. But in this case, soars in the back, waters in the front, and the other scenario, water lines running up Klein, it's also running up that.
Yeah, because I see, I, I understand Al saying about, you know, concern with the traffic pulling out.
Right.
I mean, kind of, one of the things when I look at it, and this is just. It's like the, the six houses, so you have your development and then you have houses, like you're building around. So that was just, I mean, that's kind of.
That's why I was thinking, go to cul-de-sac area, street.
So it does.
So you have one here.
Yeah.
They are on an island over there.
Yeah, but that's kind of, I mean, it's kind of, uh, when you first look at it, it's a feeling you got, like, okay, you have your development and then you have these houses.
And, and believe me, if we could go find a place to make it six somewhere else, but meeting all of, virtually all of the other ordinance departments. We, we lost five or six when the three to ones became two to ones. And throughout the plan. Okay.
So you said those do have the sidewalks and all the same.
They have sidewalks or access, they're sidewalk slash, no, they can just trail one way.
So the other question, the houses within the development, you say have the, the street light at their, end of their driveway.
So if this is our, if this is the road, and this is where it's one of the single family, this is, this is the road. This, this will be the unit. This would be your garage door and conceivably your front, your front doors here, okay? And this is about thirty, it's about thirty-two feet, I believe. You're gonna have a lead walker coming out of your front door, there's a landscape bed. And then depending on the actual style of the unit, it'll draw, but typically that light's either right there or, or right there.
Okay, so it's closer to the home.
It's closer to the home, the intention is to, like, that area, but it does spill to the sidewalk.
So will those six houses under the show's line still have that lighting?
Why don't we put two, why don't we put one at Klein and one here?
Well, I guess that was my question, isn't it? I guess that was a question that I was gonna ask, so if it was the end of the driveway, so that, that puts the light shining onto Klein, is that?
Would you, would you want the light shining on the Klein, because these are actually a lot farther back from the road than the other houses. There's seventy-five feet, I don't know how almost get a house there. So it's like double, they probably, they may not have any kind of that, that creeps out on the Klein.
Yeah, so that's why I was wondering where they were.
I was just saying, that's a, you know, that's just a portrait of.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, it's like a. Yeah, I know, so you can't like replace it yourself.
I guess my question was, I didn't think it was. Yeah, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, if you thought it would be helpful.
I was thought you were going, I was see, so I could see the driveway and light up the walk, I would say.
Yeah, that's why I was asking where it was.
No, that would be a lot, yeah. I would never have even had to ask that question.
All right, we got several conversations going. I don't know if we gained anything over here. Well, we gained some things over here too. So we're gonna send Brett back to the drawing board. Here's, come on over here, Brett. Just throwing things out, you know, we understand your problem and we're just trying to say what can be done. What if you put a cartway to serve these six houses that go straight out, wouldn't be, wouldn't be a regular road, it'd be a cartway that would have to be serviced by the HOA for snow removal. Be a long driveway, in other words.
It's a private driveway.
Yeah, be, be a straight driveway, here you don't lose anything, you go right out here. I do, uh, be concerned there, you know, you'd be turning out to a short way here, but you eliminate these driveways when you, into the.
So I've already looked at this and I'm fine with doing it, okay?
Why didn't you?
Well, because I have a, because I'm looking, as I said before, I'm, I, I am looking out for the township, I serve on one of these boards and I know where this is going.
You don't serve on one like this.
I'm, I'm, I miss my planning commission meeting, I caught up, heck, the whole way over there. Is, we can propose a shared private drive across here, fourteen foot, sixteen, something that two cars can pass, but not, you know.
You can.
We can, okay? Thus eliminating this, provided that you allow it to be within the seventy-five foot. I know, because typically that's reserved for perpendicular crossing to the perimeter, we'll call it buffer, that would obviously be.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind it to go all the way through, I'm just thinking from here to there.
Well, I would want it going all the way through, because they're, and you're hitting on where our concern was in this, is that this becomes a private drive, I deal with this. I can tell every one of these people when they move in, you, you are in this little sub-association over here, you guys are responsible for not only the snow plowing, but the repair of that road, the retopping of that road, if it gets a pothole, whatever the case may be. And I sell these units and we move on, and I guarantee you, they'll always in this room.
I want the HOA to do that.
Well, because they're gonna have to be their own HOA, I can't have two hundred and fifteen other people living on a public road not paying a dime for its maintenance and have these people paying for these people's services.
I think you can. Seriously, I'm, I'm not being funny, but it's a BRD and you're making the conditions, I'm not even saying this is a final solution, I'm just saying that when you say you can't do something, they looking deeper to find out what can be done, is what I'm.
Well, we didn't propose it because I've literally been down, that I've done this exact same thing before. And ultimately, um, I, I cannot, I can't have, I can't have the rest of these people paying for a service that's only provided to a certain number of persons.
But if it opens at both ends, is it then?
Usable.
Usable by everybody. Does it become possible? The people will use it as a cut through?
You wanna have a lay-in on this at all, what's, what's being suggested as essentially a private drive?
But I'm just wondering, like, if, because you said you have experience with this, do people then start using it as a cut through?
Well, when here, we're asked for one. So, the, the issue here, we had initially proposed a public road connecting here, okay? Pond, wetland and stream delineation. Pine, wetland, and stream delineation, that really is not a possibility. So we're proposing these six lots directly access existing Klein Road, okay? No requirement against it, but we don't like, we don't like. So one of the thoughts would be to run a private drive, shared use access easement across all six. I feel it needs to connect on both, because once, sign, wherever it doesn't connect, the other side's gonna get less wear. Get correct, you have a private drive this whole way. The issue there is, though, is that I would need to have a sub-association in some manner, or a different condo budget, or HOA budget. I, I can't pin the reserve and replacement on that, on everybody, maybe I can legally, but I don't know, I don't know realistically or ethically how I could do it.
How does the parking lot get, uh, snow plowed?
It's part, it's owned by the master association of which, regardless of what your access is between the community, you're, you're a member of the master. And I can't make everybody a member of that.
We're not to hold this thing up, I know, tempting we're gonna come to a final conclusion. Keep looking at it.
So let's, let's, if I do that, just stop.
I, I have a question.
Okay.
I don't think, you can maybe ask that question on the seventeenth, I don't think we're ready to say that tonight.
It's twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
I guess I'm asking now, I can come back every month with another idea, another.
No, but this has been talked about, this problem.
And I've still held firm in my position that, that that's our design. You're asking me to consider another idea, I'm saying I can consider it, but I, I don't wanna come next week and have, you know, these, these three kinda wanna see it again, these three don't like it, and this was, go back to the drawing board. So I'm just trying to get the, this.
I know, whatever I wanted to say is, you can rubber stamp it.
I, I guess, just same way you pulled the group with, you know, what are, what are your thoughts on this? I'm, I guess I'm simply asking what are your thoughts on the proposal, turn it back. Um, I, I would need to study that. Um, I will point out, however, and I've already lost two in any road I punched through here, now I've lost ten.
Yeah, but you also took two out of here because you made these two lots bigger, now you can have them smaller again, like they were the last.
Right, but I did about a million dollar worth of road. No, this is, this I can, this is more agreeable, 'cause I would not have to go through the township spec. I'm basically trading the, that distance of driveway, six of those times that distance is roughly that, twice.
Your driveway would have to come out into this lot here, right?
Well, that's the perimeter setback.
I mean, it would have to be odd from, it would have to be odd from Klein Road to be able to get a turning lane onto this road B or, right, you'd have to be five years something.
It would be the first, if this was a fourteen foot, it'd be the first, I'll say twenty feet. You know, you would have a, a shared use access easement.
I thought we'd go out to the road then.
Well, not with the feet though.
You were saying it comes right across there.
Yeah, well, maybe I misunderstood, but that's.
No, I, I don't want it to go out of the road. You have, you have this road or this road?
And he has a question.
I'm just.
You're just meeting on regular one.
He's been driving.
So, in the original plan, you had that road that you've eliminated.
Right.
So I'm trying to picture, if I'm driving down Klein Road, or I lived across the street, and I know there's one house a little bit down, what's the difference in what I'm gonna see? So one, what you're proposing now, I'm gonna see the front of their house, their driveway out onto Klein Road. If you've turned it back around, so that they are not entering onto Klein Road, what kind of buffer is in there? What am I looking at driving down the road or living across the street?
Back of their house.
And is there, is there a buffer? Am I gonna see trees, or am I looking right at the back of the house?
There's a road, trees along.
Well, the back of the house might, you, or you say it's not anyway, it's a million dollar road. We're, we're providing a cartway, you still see the front of the house.
So you'd still see the car.
And it'd be nice if there was a buffer, because, you know, these people didn't pay to be in the townhouse, but yet this is right in your face, as if they are.
If you did the cartway, and it's open on both ends, and so then it would be accessible to anyone, is that then free up any way to, put it in the HOA, or no? I, I'm just tossing it out there.
The concept is, is one of what we call a common element, so. Um, but there's, there's basically a subcuture. Typically, when you're gonna charge somebody.
Making a suggestion is not a red.
Yeah. So even though it's open on both ends, and it could be a cut through, it's not a major, it's not a.
Who else is gonna use that?
I know, and I, I'm just throwing it out there, I wanna just try to cover everything.
Well, I would be careful with that, who else is gonna use it?
Yeah, I mean.
If somebody wants to get from here, over to here, I'm avoiding, I'm avoiding pulling out on this line, right? I think that's a possibility.
If you want it designated as a common element, you would do that.
Right. Right. It's, it's gotta be.
So that's, that's the issue.
That's your problem.
Those, those folks, I'm gonna be, you know, dealing with the issue where everyone else, maybe you said that. They could later impart that expense on, on just six streets to go back.
Yeah.
Much the, from our association, the association's having the authority to modify and create a, a common element.
Which is how, from the.
The chapters.
Yeah.
Well, that's how I think of it.
So, and this, this was decided.
Yeah, we had light in front of each couch.
In front of the house, but my concern is, where's the light relation?
As you can turn around. All right, we have, we're at a, we're at a predicament of recommendation here. Maybe, and I'm not hearing any too much negative from them, but suggesting a cartway, eliminate all these driveways out on Klein. Put a cartway, what's the cartway now, sixteen feet or?
Minimal use.
They go all the ways across there, and the worst-case scenario, that would allow him to actually put two more units in there, 'cause he reduced this from eight to six, I'm assuming he could.
I would respectfully ask to give back and look at that, because essentially, from a traffic's movement standpoint, I've met the, back to where the original, 'cause I was.
What I'd like to see from you on the seventeenth. Show up on the seventeenth. Yes, hey, I don't want you to change all this, what, give me a, a small picture that we could say that's what you're proposing. He can do first, one of the first. You guys, you in this meeting?
Yep.
He's going to make a small, he's gonna make a small plan of this section. Possibly adding two more lots here, but doing a cartway across. He said he's taking a minute.
Maybe three. He might just put two plus, it's gonna be twelve.
Yeah, so the cartway change, I was.
That does look so bad, though, right?
When this grows up, you won't see these at all, I almost, depending on how.
You know, but if I'm living over here, you make it thick.
The bad thing about all this, the bad thing about all this, when this is all done, these people all can subdivide and add two more lots in. That would be considered bad, because we're saying we don't want a PRD, and we're getting one, and these people still have nice sized lots, they're gonna subdivide. Almost get it.
I've looked at all of them, you can.
Whoever first one, the rest of them is. No, that's a, that's a, that's another issue. I'm hearing all positive. You're positive? Looking at that way?
Looking at the front, that there's a cartway.
They want the houses all to be facing Klein.
Look at that, two more.
I can do that.
No.
And with the two, I'll, I'll even, if you said he'll do it, I'll say I'll, I don't wanna specifically state which buffer, 'cause I don't know enough stuff I have, but we could supplement the required canopy tree planting with a hedgerow, some sort of shrub layer between the cartway and Klein Road. Yeah, like in between these, you know, maybe there's four shrubs, four shrubs, you know, adding to that to.
Preserve.
To preserve, and it's gonna help with headlights.
And give us an idea of some distance between.
I'm not getting involved with that.
Between the light and the cartway edge would be how many?
Well, I need to look at that, I might need to push these back a little bit, but I, because I, I still need to have, you know, say it's a twenty-foot cartway beginning right there.
Because you eliminate the turnarounds.
Right.
You can eliminate these, huh?
Correct, and I eliminate the turnarounds, so this is gonna become your cartway. I need to look at the distance from there to there to make sure that, I'll, I never wanna have a car parked.
You need a.
These probably need to pull back ten feet, which is fine, to give me, you know, there's your car sitting there, unit moves back. If I hold this, that point right there is seventy-five feet from the right away, making it about eighty-one feet from the road, subtract that twenty, so you're gonna have sixty-one feet of green space.
You can put a nice buffer in there.
Right, and well, we can, I'll even, if it's agreeable, we can even top still do, maybe not as high amount, 'cause that is still somebody's front yard, but do a little landscape farm off the backside of Klein, on top of, we plant our trees and our shrubs, so you have.
Yeah, that's right, me.
Like that better?
Yeah, I mean, a little better.
I like it better. Look at back of their house.
No, you're not going.
Give us a preliminary on a small eight and a half by eleven. Don't give us a whole nother set of these plans, please do.
That's a nice, thank you.
The last thing I have for having everyone here is, are you guys interested in doing a road trip up there? Sponsored by Weaver Homes?
You drive it?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell him to get.
Where's up there?
I'm gonna tell him to get seven golf carts, the fancy ones, drive us around the development.
Get all my buddies on our side-by-side as well.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna need a side-by-side, the golf cart's not gonna work.
Are you interested?
Obvious, lucky.
Are you interested, are you interested?
Yeah, definitely.
Everyone's interested, I don't know, I'd like to do it before the seventeenth.
Four to twenty-first, so, so we're looking at a site visit. So I'm. I'll be sitting about good, Rick Allen. Site visit with PC.
Can you do something for us there, since everyone's interested?
I, I can't promise you that everybody gets the finances, golf carts aren't gonna get the job.
Nah, I'm just.
But, um.
I want you to provide whatever you need to get us off.
I do. Somehow, some way, I, I can get that done, I, I, it may be a scenario right now, we get three carts, or maybe, but maybe it's, I don't know. What is, uh, just so that I'm, what is our intention, what are we looking to achieve?
I don't know, I just, just. Long as it's before the twenty-first, I think we should do it before the twenty-first.
So there hasn't been this design, I would say, at this point, I would think we'd all would have visited this site at this point.
I've been up here more than a dozen times, and I still keep stretching my neck out, hoping nobody hits me. Um, what's a good day? The week of the eleventh, what's a good day? Monday through, it's a Tuesday through Thursday, twelfth, thirteenth, or fourteenth. Thirteenth would be a Wednesday.
Thirteenth. Or fourteenth.
Thirteenth through fourteenth. Yeah, you might be established, you, you actually have to go to work.
What about us?
The thirteenth, I.
Before noon?
Oh, I can't, I can't do during the day.
Not during the day.
So you wanna say six o'clock? Anytime after four, I could do four.
I'm not gonna be here. Glad, can we avoid, can we avoid the thirteenth, sort of?
Yes, please.
Are you excited about it, or?
I could do the fourteenth, as long as I'm out of there by six o'clock.
Six hundred square foot, I assume.
We could do four o'clock on the fourteenth. And Ron might wanna go, and Laura might wanna go. Four o'clock on the fourteenth, same.
Not quite that far, it's up.
Can you do four o'clock?
I'll just, I'll have to wait.
They benefit the other.
Yeah, well, I, it's really up to the board, but I don't think that it's gonna help me at all, um, I'm not very especially, um, happy for some, so, I just look at the box.
Four o'clock on the fourteenth. Where at?
Is that gonna be a quorum, is that gonna be a public meeting? Uh, it depends on how many, uh, people are going, but.
Six, six are going.
Six. So, that is a, yeah, that is an issue, though, to consider with the quorum. I think it's just for information gathering, so a quorum is allowed to meet for information gathering purposes without having a public meeting. Um, you know, but if people wanted to break it up, there's that possibility as well.
Well, if we keep twenty feet between.
I have a golf, I have a side-by-side and a quad that I would gladly chauffeur if I could attend the meeting, so, I can provide two. I can provide two ATVs, and I've offered numerous times for site visits that have all been ignored, so.
Uh, I wouldn't have a problem with the.
We've already had quite a bit of trespassing and fields getting torn up, so we'll limit it to our staff, and, and.
Yeah, and again, they're allowed to meet without a public meeting for information gathering purposes, so I would imagine that whatever information they would be gathering, it would be brought back and discussed in a public meeting, so that complies with the statute.
Meet at the barn?
Sure.
Meet at the barn, four o'clock on the fourteenth. It would be up to Weaver Homes to decide how they want to form us up there. I'm not going to, uh, restrict them or tell them how to do it. You know what our concerns are, we try to get at one site view versus driving by. You can show them that forty-foot wall you wanna build for that bridge and all that. Those, those are the important things I wanted to do tonight. For any of you that feel you gotta go, 'cause we're running nine o'clock here, um, we can, uh, schedule another meeting, or if you look at your pamphlet, you could, uh, go through them and be prepared for the twenty-first. Or if you want another meeting, we'll do another meeting here. You wanna do him here?
Where are you guys sitting?
Definitely Art has to go. We have to throw him out, 'cause he talked about going, is that? Laura might wanna take you to the dinner.
Laura has a child to put to bed, three nights in a row I've missed.
Um, then let's move on to, um.
Mr. Horn, um, there's also some children that need, not, not their children, but their, yeah, children. Are there highly, we'll say, technical engineering or traffic-related questions still to come that, that I might. Are there highly, we'll say, technical engineering or traffic related questions still to come that I might ask be addressed, simply because these guys have families of, I'm almost, I think.
I'm gonna say I don't have any problem with them leaving. This is just, actually, it's for the people who weren't able to make the last.
Prior meetings, correct.
So.
I mean, if you go through them, it's just a, the agreeable, uh, agreeable.
Uh, correct, alright, and I guess.
Most of it, I think the rest of this, most of it is that.
I agree, that's why I asked the question.
What, what number would we?
You're a subdivision.
Subdivision, I'm sorry. Okay, I got it, okay. Uh, subdivision number one. The ordinance requires a preliminary subdivision plan be provided, previous comment, a complete subdivision plan, full recording collected, all that cats. A preliminary subdivision plan was solely been provided. The final subdivision plan will, must be provided at time of final application, A. The ordinance requires A, location. They're gonna do that, they will, they'll add that, it's for your reminder. The ordinance B, the ordinance requires track boundaries with bearing. Applicant to provide preliminary condominium plan, clarifying their configuration of quad and duplex lots, final meters and bounds of proposed interior lots being included upon subdivision plans, that's up to me, so, okay, they'll, they'll be doing that. Go to, uh, C. The ordinance requires our rights of ways, these conventions and purposes will, they are established. Response, uh, response notes that storm lateral alignments and are to be provided at time of final application, and they are stating they will provide that on the final. On D, they're agreeing to will provide at the final. Number two, ordinance requires existing of reported easements, their location, the other, the other. Weaver Homes stated they are currently working. Al Horn stated he knows of at least three residence on Mo Drag that have interest in connecting to the source facility, which we need to go over that, correct? We don't get to it tonight, remind you, we gotta talk about it.
Have we got? What part of the order?
I'm going subdivision two.
Okay.
This is where we are asking for the right of ways for.
Okay.
Source service on Mo Drag.
Might I just address that quick?
Yeah.
So I, as I committed to, I had, uh, our consultant, uh, Tepco trouble equipment, uh, they are. They supply the, the E one pumps, which we, we spoke of last time. They have provided to me, and I earlier today sent to Mr. Line Decker and, um, and Lori, the preliminary design showing each of their homes. The pump location, the lateral location, and the size and several zones, and I can just confirm that what I said, I committed to last time installing that piece of two inch low pressure sewer on our property within an easement is adequate, and that has been provided.
And those are grinder pumps?
They are grinder pumps.
How many would there be?
Three. Well.
One for each house?
One for each house.
Depends on where we, if we ran it behind, could we do one?
Well, you, you folks together would have, have options, would, how would pursue that.
But we were looking at, uh, the confluence, where your. Sewer lines going.
Right.
Now, isn't it? Where, where your easement comes from.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's where my house is.
Okay.
Now, isn't the sewer line running there, down toward Hoffman, around, and then down toward the plant?
Uh, I mean, I don't know the, the whole plant off the top of my head, but I, I know that the end of your, your property, if the easement comes up to our stream, there's a gravity manhole there. I believe it's flowing directly to the plant at that location. I don't think it makes a loop through there. But in any case, the proposed discharge point for the, the force vein that I had designed, it doesn't, it makes no difference to you what would happen to that flow, whether it goes left, right, straight, or wherever, you have a gravity discharge location. Does that?
You just have to get it there.
What's that?
You just have to get it there and it's up there too.
Well, it's, it's designed to be a two inch line. If it's a larger line, your system won't work. If it's a smaller line, your system won't work. It's a, it's. So I'm a cop.
So let me see if I understand, you, your engineer provided to you, and you provided to the township. A proposed system that, you know, working engineer. All they have to decide is how they need to run it for their benefit for those five houses.
That's not all they have to decide, but yes, that, that would be correct. Now, one, that two inch line will work whether there's one house connected or five. And nobody would, there's no chance that it's not adequate for, for the five lots that are on Mo Drag. It would be their option to, to, I can't work out what five, five people wanna do, especially when they're making lots.
So you guys, you have to spend some time, go in, see Ron, what he got, what he was given. I think, this is my own personal opinion, just for you five working together, you have a lateral. Can you supply any information for them, how best for them to work it?
I think they've been, I mean, we can certainly review what was submitted. Um, I think there's a fine line of townships involved.
I agree, they're.
Yeah, I don't want there to be any appearance of a conflict of interest.
We're gonna need an engineer to get that finally settled, that what their, what the buffer is supplying and how to get it hooked up.
You, you, Mr. Horn, you have that. You, the, this didn't come from, like, a guy just drew some lines on a page. That the information that I supplied to the township would be information that that group, and you're, you're welcome to it, could then take, and, you would have to hire an engineer to appropriately prepare the application to go to DEP, that would allow you to, all those things.
Okay.
But the information is. There. Well, say the construction information.
Don't, don't sit on it.
Paperwork is not.
Don't sit on it. We got his attention. If there's any more questions, we get him to. You know, I don't wanna take up all his time. I'm glad you're doing that, I'm glad you did that.
I said last time I would make sure that the line we put in the ground for these folks was adequate, for them to, at some point connect to it, and I can prove that it is.
So you've gotta collect the information and see if you understand it, and if that'll work. Alright, thanks, Brett. Okay, so that takes us down to three. They are already going beyond what I thought they were gonna do, so that's good. Uh, the ordinance requires the plan, provide location, name, and width of all proposed streets, that was, part was, uh. The answer was provided, it's submitted to Planning Commission, Lori, uh, will submit road name, bill, that's it.
May I ask a question? There was a contingency, and I'm just gonna bring this up now, I'm not gonna wait till the public hearing. There was a contingency clause in the sales agreement that it had, Justine had drafted a few street names. Have those names been considered?
Yes.
Oh.
Somebody else brought that up and they were given to, uh, Weaver, two streets.
Thank you.
The ordinance, number four, the ordinance requires cul-de-sac streets, not big, see one thousand feet, that's the cul-de-sac that, uh, I bought up with the emergency, uh. Road off of it, and we're gonna remove that emergency road. Number five, the ordinance requires streets of design and course of street design standards, and they're agreeing, agreeing to that one. Number six, they agreed to. Number seven, they agreed to. Number eight, they're agreeing to. It's not that they agreed, the, the engineer says this was not on the plan yet, and they're saying it'll be on there if we're agreeing to what needs to be done. Then we go into storm water management, number one. There was an easement that needs to be shown on the revised plan. Repairian buffer easement has not been provided, repair, repair, repairian buffer easement should be shown on the tentative plan. And you're okay with that. They're gonna be shown. Number two, the ordinance requires a plan, not increased post-development total runoff volume for all storms equal. This has been noted and it's agreed to be required at final, which is standard, uh, E and, E and S, uh, development. So they're gonna do that. Number three, the ordinance requires plan and profile drawings and details. SWM and B, BMPs, including drainage structure pipes, open channels. They're agreeing to that, there's no issues with that. Number four, they're agreeing to. I don't remember where these lots are, but they're the ones on climb right at, two twenty, twenty-nine, thirty-six. Right away for Klein, Orin, Claire. If they're agreeing, there, there, there's no issues there. Number five. Uh, there's a lack of final detail, and they're going to get that final detail and final design. Number six, they're agreeing. Number seven, they agreed to do what's needed. A, B, and C. C is, uh. Shaun requested conveyance be added, which is normal stuff that they should do. Okay, that'll be going, E one there. Number eight, they're agreeing to. That's, and it came up for location, okay, these are the, the drainage out of the, uh, retention parts? Applicant to evaluate discharge location based on review of the CCD and design engineer, so more work is being done on that. And they're agreeing that it, it needs to. Ten, they're agreeing to. Plans should be updated to address. Eleven, there is being updated and they're agreed. Number twelve, they're updating on the final. Thirteen, they're agreeing on final. Number fourteen, they're agreeing to. Shaun has a few comments in there. One to fourteen, ensure ponds are sized properly and show land cover now, it was agreed, Weaver Homes will show up things now. They're gonna put fences around the ponds. It's gonna be split rail. And that's it on, uh, subdivision, so we go into traffic. Number one, the ordinance, uh, requires traffic impact study, they agreed, and they have supplied one, it might be some issues that Shaun has to ask him to include. Number two. Crash analysis, info, they agreed, will be prepared. Number three.
Sorry.
You're interrupting me.
I know. This is, just a quick question, can you back up to the ponds, to the split rail front fence? Are there two open water ponds and nine, or are these on all retention, detention, like, where, where are the split rails?
Uh, we're up, your ordinance, I believe, provides them around all former basins.
I'm thinking they're on all of them.
So are there, are there open water ponds as?
There's no, there's no extended, there's no lakes.
There's no, this is not standing water ponds, they will fill up during the rain, but they will drain out over a period of time.
So they're detention. We don't have any retention or rain gardens. One of the concerns with the agricultural, um, aspect, being in the agricultural district, and I'd just like the Planning Commission to consider this in advance of the meeting, is that, um, there are chemical. Can, you know, contaminants that can be filtered by retention ponds, that can be mediated with certain types of vegetation and planting. That would be an asset. We are an organic farm, as are other farms, um, around us, that do not have any type of chemicals, have not had any chemicals, and we do sell our crops as such. So it would be beneficial, um, specifically at my property line, to have something considered, um, that would not be a detention, where there would be. Um, you know, chemical contaminants coming from roadways, downspouts, fertilizers on lawns, and, uh, that type of runoff.
Do you understand that?
Um, no, I guess you're requesting that they be wet ponds?
Yes.
But I, I think that would be the discretion of the design engineer, how they can achieve compliance with the ordinance and their permitting requirements.
Historically, I'll just say they're more and more difficult. With DEP, given the infiltration requirements, as we, I'm sure you guys know, December seventh is rolling around here. The, uh, with the new, the P regs coming out, and are going to be even more focused on infiltration versus detention.
Yeah, I mean, if they, they meet the performance criteria, it's difficult for the township to dictate the type of BMP they use. If the developers are to replace, I don't know, that we can compel them to change the type.
All I can answer is we'll, we'll decide to the standard of DEP, um, and township, storm water.
This is an agricultural district, this is a conditional use in an agricultural district where there are active agricultural lands, farms, being farmed. And so I would just like the board to consider the aspects that the surrounding and adjacent, adjacent property owners are using their land, and this will cause, you know, this will cause a potential harm to our crops.
I hear what you're saying, but the ponds are pretty much regulated by DEP, and what you're allowed to do and not allowed to do.
And there are detention, retention, rain gardens, there are several different types of ponds that can be considered, so.
Gonna follow that regulation, I know that's a tough one.
So let's look into it before the twenty-first.
And you're.
Pardon me, there's one right on our property line. There's one within ten feet of our property, which is our back field, which is, which is a primary field.
I can't guarantee anything on that, but, uh, we'll, Shaun will look into if there's, uh, options for them to follow.
I, I don't know if there's a way to compel them to change the type of EMP.
Yeah, I'm agreeing. They'll look into it, that's all I can say, at this point.
And I will, far as say, if I have options, meaning a wet pond or a dry pond, if those options are. Six and one, half dozen, we will certainly work to that request, but to the extent that adds time, money, additional maintenance, additional.
I don't think you're gonna have options, I, I'm not, I'm not that.
I know, I'm, I'm agreeing to hear the, and the resident and.
Okay, they'll look at it. I don't think they have options. She'd be concerned about the year. There's two ponds right on her property line, I think that's the two that she probably would like if there could be something done. They're pretty small.
The geography is, they're gonna go down this way.
They're not very.
But those streams flow into our stream. Those streams, this, this flows into a stream and you can't see it on the map, and this goes back into our property. So this is, this is a valley. And it comes down.
I, I don't.
The water doesn't flow.
Yeah, yes.
It, so it's flowing in our property, we're downhill.
Well, I should say that this property hasn't been farmed for a number of years, and most spray materials are designed to dissipate and activate on the crop for that particular year. And the re, the carryover would be long gone, I would say, of anything that was sprayed on that farm.
But that's not the concern, Ed.
I'm sorry?
That's not my concern. My concern is, my concern is contaminants from road, road, the roadways in here, from stormwater runoff, from the rooftops, from cars. And any other type of chemical constituents that are added to those, to the, the lawns.
Shaun will do some research, Brett's gonna do some research, and see if he can give us an answer on the twenty-first.
Do the HOAs? Do the HOAs not use fertilizer? Do the HOAs not use fertilizers? Are those, are those lots not fertilized? Are there not weed killers sprayed to eliminate dandelions? Uh, uh, yes, yes. And weed killers will be used?
They're herbicides.
They're pretty, they're pretty small, whatever.
Able to be.
I don't care how small it is. We don't have any, we have not had any chemicals on our fields for over thirty years. Forty years. We're forty years organic.
Any chemicals that are applied here would have to be applied for a commercial applicator with a commercial applicator's license. And those products would be designed to stay on that site.
And water, and water refu, paper refuses ink and water doesn't flow downhill. Okay.
Designed to activate and do what they're supposed to do here and not move off-site. That's, FDA approves all that.
So they have a commercial license coming into the HOA that's spraying the lawns?
They should, yes. They should have a commercial applicator's license. I have a private.
I know this particular issue is gonna get resolved, so I, I, this evening, I think that you said there's gonna be separate research conducted, so I can just move off the license item.
Okay.
Let's go to traffic. The ordinance requires traffic impact. They agree with that. The ordinance requires traffic impact study and inventory of existing site conditions. They agreed will be prepared. I highlighted this one, so it must be important. The ordinance requires a traffic study include analysis of present and future measures of roadway activities. That's what I was getting at about the berm and the wearing surface. And your statement is Weaver Homes stated they will place three-way stop signs. Wind Road stated a detailed evaluation of climb road based on existing proposed traffic is needed. Developer to provide assessment and recommended improvements for township review. We, we requested a dedicated right-of-way to bring roads to fifty feet. They agreed to that. Sean indicated a question to consider seventy-five PRD setback, who've made some changes or probably made changes here that satisfy the planning commission. So there might be, there's seventy-five foot setback, but we're gonna include in that with a, a fifty-foot right-of-way. Fifty-foot right-of-way, not fifty-foot, a cartway inside the PRD.
Well, aside from that too, just to clarify, so there are other lots that would be impacted. The request from the developer would be then if you're going to give the additional right-of-way, that all of the seventy-five foot buffer will be measured from the existing right-of-way. So Klein Road's thirty-three feet now. That seventy-five foot setback is from thirty-three foot right-of-way, not from the fifty-foot cars. Uh, because it's not just the, this driveway or the curveball courts at that point. It's all of the homes and.
Always done. If we increase the right-of-way, you're right, you'd be correct. Six and a half more feet that we're giving for the road.
Eight and a half actually. You go from thirty-three to three.
Reduces your setback to fifty, to sixty.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, seventy-five to sixty-seven and a half.
Correct. We do think it's prudent planning for the future. Township fixes right-of-way now more globally, so we don't have to go back into individual property owners later too if we do right-of-way.
Yeah, that's the right way to do it. We, we agree with that. Okay, number four. Traffic impact study address adequacy of future traffic conditions. That site distance does not appear to be adequate. They're going, their traffic study addresses that. Although it's an existing road, this issue should be made aware to township and the. Furthermore, it looks like in the proposed condition from the full plan set, intersection shown is an all-way stop. Well, that three-way stop isn't all-way stop. There's only that one. The other ones don't have, they only have one-way stop. Traffic impact studies would include discussion on this issue, including all-way stop warrant analysis. Further analysis of warrants for all-way stops at all other proposed intersections with Klein, Hoff and Road should be provided. You, I don't know if there's more update on that traffic study, but I think it said that they're gonna add additional information.
Well, yes, but what's on there is opt-in by becoming a three-way stop. It is a means to warrant, and warrant, by warrant, I mean justified, permitted, or otherwise supposed to have a stall, a three-way stop. Uh, I mean, that's basically what the chunky studies give.
Yeah, our request is the paper, the study, there's, you know, and we say warrant, that's a specific thing. Said there's a stop sign that's, that should be justified to be there. So from an enforcement perspective in the future, and it's papered and we can have it, something about the stop sign. If we arbitrarily put stop signs somewhere, maybe we don't have that. So that, that's the crux of this.
Only one, I, and I, I don't know how this is controlled, but from coming down Klein going west, come to Klein Road. That's an iffy type intersection. Is there possible that the stop sign there could be a blinker?
I, I don't disagree with that. I'd like to specify, I'm heading, I'm on Klein heading west, so.
Yeah, you kind of Hoffmann, you said.
Okay.
You meant to say Hoffmann.
That's, okay.
I think you did.
Consider that.
I, I mean, provided, again, that eventually is a township owned property and that's, there is a maintenance, um, and a repair and replacement like anything else, but I don't know if you have those in your township area. Do you have?
You might wanna talk to RJ about that too, see what he says if that's a good idea.
I have a question, just.
You're venting too many questions.
A brief question.
The last one wasn't brief.
Well, there's the bait and switch, you know. Um, no, this is simple. Was a four-way stop sign considered there? I don't particularly like the exit point of.
It's only three roads. That could be a four-way stop.
There's only, there is only three.
Where, where.
Hoffman and Klein.
Yes, where I don't particularly like this exit point from the cul-de-sac. Was, is there anything that can be done to have this shifted over? Because you're coming around a bend here and then you have to, was anything considered to, to move that to a four-way?
We looked at that a while back.
Actually moved it that way. No. The answer is, you know, due to, you know, grading, we get steep down through here. Here, we're getting into streams, wetlands. We see that, we see that appearing down here. If this were to align, then I'm.
No.
So, so the answer is.
We, we agreed that we couldn't do that. You couldn't do that.
Nope.
We, we looked at. Number five, I, I think that's just a question on the blinking stop sign. And they're agreed to that anyway, although this is the first time we talked about a blinking stop sign. Number six, the ordinance requires traffic impact study address the adequacy of future traffic conditions, and it doesn't do that. I think it goes out as much as fifteen years, if I recall what I read. You're gonna go over the traffic study or are we, you did?
Yeah. These are our comments based on review.
If that makes sense, I'm reading it. Number six, they agreed to. We'll put note in the court. With the transportation improvement program. Okay. Discussion occurred after the review items, and this would have then have to be finished everything. Discussion over improvements to Klein Road occurred. Sean requested signage improvements we made. Advanced signage was requested. You still have to do the signage for the developer. Then your line deck, we requested Klein and Hoff and Road running development be paved. We trust that Weaver Homes states the road would be bonded. That's normal. They would be take care of any damage to the existing road. I'm asking for the berms to be redone because they are already bad. In the case of road damage, that one would be called in from the township sister well or clarify that the one would only require Weaver Homes to repair or maintain the road to state. And yada, 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 yada. Maintenance agreement be required and that'll be done. Discussion occurred on the driveways and Klein Road. We think we can do that tonight. Hopefully we come up with a solution that's gonna be satisfactory to everybody. Supervisor Spade questioned the maintenance agreement for the sewage facility. It's really outside our preview, other than the HOA will be responsible to maintain the sewage facility. And that is licensed with the DEP.
Licensed. You have that licensed operator.
Operator, so that's.
All, all of which is contained within, was and is contained within the planning module that was previously reviewed by the planning commission and subsequent sign-off.
This lister's gonna clean us all up and put it into the final document that shows responsibility of the facilities that are gonna be used up there.
For the sewage management, I think that we have discussed that there was already some documentation on that when the application was submitted, that we could begin with. So I think LSSC actually already took care of the.
I think it is.
The agreement exists, yes.
Yeah.
Since you're new.
Yeah.
I'm throwing it at you.
Yeah.
Make sure it's taken care of.
Yeah, yeah, I'll double check to make sure we have that on file.
I'm sure Sean was there.
Chairman Bond of the township could take over the sewage facility. That's a long shot and there's no movement on that at this point that I know. Weaver Homes will request the sewage facility operator to provide a presentation.
Yeah.
Are you doing that on the 21st?
Yep.
Very first thing.
He's aware.
Okay, good. Weaver Homes is bringing in their facility operator for other, um, facilities that they have over the years. And he's gonna do a presentation on the wastewater facility, just to kind of tell everybody what these things do and how they do it, how they're maintained. So we are gonna have them at the meeting on the 21st. Weaver Homes, we just, the amount of discharge that goes into the stream will be included on that, so. That is it for this round. Now, the intent is, we have done some things that, that we're gonna update it. We don't need these size plants updated. For sections that you're gonna propose and say this is what maybe we agreed to or would like you to agree to, keep it a small. And we could say.
For eight to half mile.
Yeah, you could put it on there, you know, refer to page, whatever it does refer to on this large set. I don't want to see you making a whole nother set of these plans.
Well, that's a lot of trees that die to make.
And fortunately that, it's a way to carry the truck in here and back out again. Questions? Anybody have any?
I do have one. With respect to the actual formal submission that Gateway's preparing now. My ordinance, I'm required, I believe it's eleven full-size sets. Okay, we have to get you a full set of plans.
Yeah, when you're ready to do.
The board supervisors would need updated plans for, like, so I think that what you're requesting is maybe plans for some of the things that were discussed and are still kind of like hanging out there, not yet finalized.
Not yet finalized?
Sure.
Yeah, so small plans for those, but I think eventually the board's gonna need, um, a full set of plans. I don't know if we're gonna need eleven, um, but that's, that's up for especially, I think, in terms of administration. Um, because we also need them for, you know, documentation purposes, so we have to keep them all filed.
Absolutely. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that at all. Typically, a lot of times we get to, at this point, you know, eleven by seventeens of the entire plan with the blowups of what's changed to freeze, to your point, transportation, and you go, you guys are all looking at the same set, right? I don't know how many are up there, but. Whatever you want. I just wanna make sure. Is it eight or eleven, Lori? I'm not, I can't remember.
I think it, I think the, the ordinance is fifteen.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, so I don't do that, 'cause we send it now electronically to everybody except the planning commission. So I've been saying to people, one each of the planning commission members and, um, so I've been telling people this. Because I send it off electronically to everyone.
For the, eventually you have a full-size.
We would have that floated.
Every time.
Yeah, they've done this twice now. Yeah, so that's what maybe, yeah.
Where are you putting it?
Well, that may not happen.
So what I'm asking, yeah. Or whatever. Firstly, to me, it's one full-size set, one full eleven-by-seventeen set.
It's up to these guys now.
Yeah, that's up to you. That's why.
The ordinance says these guys could tell you what they.
Yeah, I don't wanna.
Any commission. Lot of them do the work at home.
Right.
Not coming over here having a full meeting. They need a plan, what, six or eight, take them home? I'd take them and do that. Oh, oh, get us eleven and the rest will be electronic for, uh, the planner. And LSSC, that's two there, they're separate. Well, if it's electronic, you can send one to them.
Are you talking about the full, whole plan?
Yeah, do you want eleven full-size plans or eleven, or eleven by five?
On the final, on the final.
For the final one, but for the ones that you're asking for in between, with the small ones.
Yeah, small, whatever. Like these here are fine. And you detail, I mean, this showed up good enough for me.
Right, definitely. So I guess.
I'll pass it another way.
This, this set of plans came to me about a month ago.
Right.
And we submitted eight of these full-size sets.
And we used them all.
Oh, as long as they're used and then so be it. We'll just.
I just don't want you to redo them every time we have a meeting. That's what I'm trying to get away from.
Well, Alan has to redo them for the planning meeting on the 21st. And he's asking, do you want full-size plans for the 21st or do you want half-size?
And we're gonna use these in any updates of this.
So he wants full-size.
Okay.
I think he does. I don't think he does.
Wait, no.
He doesn't.
No, what I was saying is we're gonna use these that we have in updates only.
Small.
On small.
We're gonna use these as.
To compare.
I'm gonna bring in further record. Please don't. I'm gonna bring in eleven, I'm sorry, eight full sets of eleven-by-seventeen half sizes.
Yeah.
Everybody has.
Yeah.
I'm going to bring in eleven-by-seventeen or eight-and-a-half by eleven is whatever fits best on any changes. I'm gonna bring in one full-size set.
Yeah.
Such that the record is established.
Yeah, perfect. That's great.
That'll work.
Okay.
Is there anything we can decide tonight to give them, like a two-to-one, three-to-one slope thing? Will we get an agreement on that tonight? Well, we can't vote on it, but if you give your opinion, we'll know that we're gonna be okay. We can't vote on it, 'cause this is not an official voting meeting. We can't do that on the 21st. So the answer is yes. That's a kind of, I was asking, do you all have any problems? I think the two-to-one slope is almost a no-brainer to me. But I don't wanna be speaking all the time for all of you. I need your comments to say you're agreeing that it's okay.
Yeah, I think so. Is there any reason there'd be concern with, with, you know, you see the news where hillsides are eroding by plants? That's not a concern to me.
I don't think it is, because it would be a lot easier to replant the two-to-one slope, it's so small. And obviously they're taking less bigger trees out of there overall.
That seems, seems.
If you see that as a benefit, it would be a good. Masons aren't here tonight, but, you know, I think they would be happy with this.
That gives them sixty-seven more.
So that, I think we could say is okay. And my next biggest thing is the.
Six-oh.
Driveways to.
Six-oh.
I, I just don't, I just, I think we may have solved that tonight. We could say that you can give us a mock-up of that. They're gonna be happy with it. The other things, Klein Road is important to me that if we get the berms fixed and the wear pavement, I think it's a one-inch wear pavement, I think. I don't think there's any bad spots on that road. You might wanna have RJ run by there or maybe.
We did an investigation.
We do it before they start, assuming you have a baseline or the, the rest.
Brett, I'm a little bit, I confused myself a little bit when we talked about water. Brett, I'm a little bit, I confused myself a little bit when we talked about water lines. And servicing the people on Klein Road. I suggested to you that you consider crossing Klein or running the length of the houses there. I don't think that's very smart. Just keep the line on the development side and just drill a one-inch line with a curb box on there itself. You okay with that?
Well, I'm not drilling the line. I can't.
I want you to drill it first.
Uh, no, because then it's, then it's gotta be tapped, there's a hole. I can't be responsible...
If you're putting a line in, you have to do it.
I can't speak for the authority.
You guys are driving me crazy. You tell me the authority can't do it, and the authority tells me they can't do it.
Well, I, I simply said that I can't speak for what the authority, I'm not, the authority's obviously not here. But I agreed to put in an eight-inch main, honestly, hundreds of feet further than we really had to. And the, and the tap of that line would be the responsibility of the owner, if they so chose to actually tap, which I don't even know if that is the case. And then the further, I don't know what the water, the municipal authority's policy is, is, does an application need to be in place? Does a fee need to be paid?
I'll have that answered for you on the 21st.
Okay, that's fine.
Find out who this fellow, I think it's Bailey, who wants water and sewer up there?
Ray Beatty.
What's your name?
Beatty.
Yeah, I think it's Beatty. Buy, you know, get him to come in and give you a firm statement of what he wants. Well, he came in. You're on top of this. I don't even have to ask, you already have the impsons. Not on most times. Okay.
One more thing.
Go ahead.
Can we get a waiver on that seventy-five foot for the pickleball court while we're in agreement, or while we're tonight?
Do you need modification?
Yeah, he wants you guys to...
A waiver?
Discuss and potentially generally agree to the thought process of who would be, be able to leave buffer around the pickleball court. Not, not, as you are kind of thumbs up, thumbs down on everything else. I want to do a thumbs up, thumbs down on the buffers around the pickleball court being...
Satisfied with the pickleball court, the way they have it designed, and they're gonna put additional...
The berms.
Yeah, I think that works.
Sure. Yeah, that's your language. Okay, the answer is yes. Could be voted on at the next meeting.
Certainly, I understand you. This is exactly what I need, so my plans are in as good a shape as I can be.
Is there anything else? Yeah, I went through my list that I had and went through all the comments.
With, with that private drive, with that exhibit, I wanna go ahead and show that land staging, that the additional, because I was gonna ask this earlier. Uh, the, you know, the additional shrub layer we're committing to put in between the camp trees for purposes of...
And then you already agreed to mound up on Modrak too.
Yes. The only condition I have there on Modrak is just, I don't, we don't know exactly how much, we will put it as high as we can, such it's still mobile and you're not looking at it for, you don't want to see a vertical wall at the top, so I don't think.
How about my property to mound?
Pardon me, sir?
How about my property to mound?
I'll put mounds.
I'll go for a nice, can you call footwood?
Can you point out exactly where, you're here?
Yeah, he's, he's from Modrak, from the end of Modrak.
End of Modrak down.
He goes all the way to Gramber.
Yeah, I, I wanna, would wanna make sure that, I don't, as we have a buffer there, I don't believe there's any trees there on that line now. You would certainly know.
There, there's trees there.
All right, well, what I wouldn't wanna do is...
Destroy those.
I'm not gonna cut down a tree to plant a smaller tree, but if we can fit a mound in between the fifty, the remaining fifty foot without, you know, adversely affecting the existing trees by putting pops on the root, within the root, you know, the crown, uh, we certainly could put them up.
Now, I would say... Don't you worry about the water damage being regressed?
I wouldn't.
Well, this is coming, this, this is all flowing. This is a T-shirt.
Yeah, I think everything's going that way, so, yeah, I mean, we would have to, with, that's an excellent point, I mean, I'm agreeable to mounds, provided that I don't cause damage or something, you don't know.
Miss off the flow.
Yeah, and then also the discussion that I, I think would be for final...
You happy with it?
Would be...
I want a big mound with hemlocks. Those hemlocks don't get chewed by the deer. They can recuperate. The other five trees, they're gonna be screwed once the deer...
Don't talk to the deer in my yard. They love my hemlocks. But, but I'd also want, it's final, but if, if we were to put that mound in the existing, or proposed buffer yard, maybe we work to have a little flexibility where we plant that, versus right on the property land, so it'll be coordinated with the mound and existing trees, but that's a final. The answer is yes.
Well, I wanna make sure she writes that down, that's what I'm trying to get, that's what I was looking for. Mounding through the neighboring properties is agreed to, basically.
Yeah, these people are gonna flip off if they see the farmer spraying the ground. So you put a nice big old pile of dirt on your side, a bunch of trees, let those people see it, better off, I'm gonna be... Is there yuppies? You people haven't seen nothing yet, the trouble you're gonna have with these women, these women.
I just have one, one question, final question before... It's not, it's really not, so you can, I have one final question before you adjourn. And my request is, is that there was, in light of some new information given today, that all requests and inquiries to the township, a right-to-know request must be filed. So can you please let us know what the appropriate and legal way is to obtain the supplementation? Obtain any information that we're gonna need in advance of the April ninth hearing, and how the public can get those documents?
Yeah, sure, so you file your right-to-know request for whatever you're looking for, and if it can't be duplicated, like for instance, I know off the top of my head that these like large plans, unless we get approval from Gateway, aren't supposed to be duplicated, so you would come into the office and like take a look at them.
So we can't get a digital copy, those can't be uploaded to the OneDrive?
That's not to say you can't, it's just we would need Gateway to approve that before we handed it over to you, because these have, yeah, copyright and like intellectual property concerns and things like that.
So, so I don't wanna overburden this.